The March 1st City Council Meeting. Commissioner Smith will give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day. Please, sir.
Let us assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious, Almighty Father, we come once again before your presence in the humblest manner that we know how. We come, we have a Father, asking your blessings upon this meeting, upon all those that are in attendance, that we shall feel your spirit and your peace as we conduct the business of this city. Help us to be good stewards of the land and good servants of yours. In thy son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On March 5th, 1770, a mob of American colonists gathered at the customs house of Boston and began taunting the British soldiers guarding the building. The protesters who called themselves patriots were protesting the occupation of their city by British troops, who were sent to Boston in 1768 to enforce unpopular taxation measures passed by British Parliament without American representation. British Captain Thomas Preston ordered his men to fix their bayonets and join the guards outside the building. The colonists responded by throwing snowballs and other objects at the British. One soldier was hit, leading him to discharge his rifle at the crowd, and other soldiers began firing moments later. When the smoke cleared, five colonists were dead or dying. The death of these five men in the Boston massacre are regarded by some historians as the first fatalities in American Revolutionary War. Fact of the day.
Got two sets of minutes in front of you. Any additions, subtractions? Not look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Michael, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. All right. Pam Richmond, come on down.
Good afternoon. I want to do just a quick presentation on an opportunity that was presented to the city, and it's to submit for a rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant that's more commonly referred to as a RACE grant. RACE funding is for critical freight and passenger transportation infrastructure projects where funding is harder to support through other DOT grant programs. The grant request is for funds for construction to widen the Coia-Papka Road from two lanes to four lanes from Harmon Road to Hawthorne. The construction also includes a 12-foot multi-use trail that will connect with the downtown trail that's about to start construction. In addition to widening the road, the grants will cover the cost of the trail as well as access management and other safety improvements along the corridor, for example, a signal at Boy Scout and maybe one other signal. We felt the city has a good chance of receiving an award because the project is located within two census tracts, which are areas of persistent poverty and historically disadvantaged communities, which is a key component of the grant application, and it strengthens the application that we submitted. This is a competitive grant with $1.5 billion in funds available in the 2023 program. Grants are judged on these criteria. We were strong in all of the categories, at least we fill. And then we've asked for about $17 million with a commitment of $4.3 million match should we receive the award. The transportation impact fee money that we do have in our reserves will be used for the match, and of course, we'll be coming back to council when we hear the good news that we received a grant. And we should hear something back from US DOT in about four months. So this will significantly help us with our infrastructure program if we're awarded a grant.
Hey, any questions for Pam?
Just applause. I mean, this is critical for us. I mean, anytime you can stand up there and talk about good news for the city in terms of our infrastructure improvement, it's going to be a great thing for not only the city and our residents, but also the people who are conducting business in this room. So this is great. Thank you so much.
We received, I don't know, how many letters of support?
Yeah.
Ten? I mean, from people that I was surprised, but as a community, we have to support our surrounding communities, and so they support us.
All right. Thank you, Pam, and thanks for the team. I know it's taken, gosh, how long you been working on this?
Months.
Just say months. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, public comments. Susan?
Gannon Stokes.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
You can lift the...
There we go.
There's a button there that you can lift that up.
Is that good? Can you hear me?
The whole electronic move up should be...
Is that good? I'm sorry. Technical difficulties, guys. Sorry about that, guys. There we go. Can you guys hear me? Oh, very nice. Electronic. Hey, guys. Good afternoon. My name is Gannon Stokes. I'm the owner of Gold Kinderhood Glass in Apopka, Florida. Some of you may know me as the Grinch driving the fire truck in the Apopka Christmas parades or around town, but today I come before you just as a local Apopka man that has grown up in this beautiful town, went to Apopka High School, and lived here almost my whole life. The Lord has blessed me, and I'm about to raise a family in this town as well. I have a baby boy due on September 3rd. I'm beyond excited to raise him where I grew up. I wanted to come before you guys and talk to you about shining the spotlight on a great local business owner that's been in our great town for 20 years now. I'm talking about Steve White, owner and operator, and I say that not lightly. He's the driving force to this day inside of his restaurant. Steve has made huge impacts on this town for over 20 years now, operating Porky's Barbecue. You know, when I personally met Steve when I worked at Real Radio 104.1 more than a decade ago, I'd been eating his barbecue long before that. I used to sell garage doors, A&amp;R Door Systems in Apopka years ago, but I never had the actual chance to meet him. Well, when you meet someone as genuine as Steve, it's almost hard not to become great friends with him. During my 13 years personally knowing Steve, I have seen him donate and give back in ways that are truly hard to describe. From Pop Warner Junior Sports banquet to funeral food arrangements to feeding our firefighters and police, he rallies around local people that have needed help during very difficult times and has done fundraisers for so many that are less fortunate day in and day out. And in a time of inflation, he dropped his prices to help his local Apopka community. I could go on and on with the stuff this great man has done for our community, but I come for you today, come before you today, and all the Apopka community to invite you to Porky's Barbecue tonight at 6:00 PM, as we are doing a surprise party to present Steve with a plaque to signify his 20 years of business and thank him for his unwavering support for his community. I also ask on this day, March 1st, if you would be so gracious enough to proclaim this day as Steve White Porky's Barbecue Day in our hometown of Apopka to not only recognize his commitment of giving back, but let others know as the time goes on, his stamp of kindness and generosity will live on through our town's legacy, hopefully inspiring other local business owners and people in the community and the importance of giving back for future generations to come. I thank you for your time. I truly love this town. I'm excited for the future of this town. I have a great day. I thank you for your time. I get a little emotional because he's just a really great guy, guys.
That is.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Can I share a quick anecdote real quick about Steve? So Steve used to work, or not work, but serve on our CRA board here. And so when I used to sit where Commissioner Nesta sits now, when he would be here, he would sit in that pink chair. And you know Steve, he's smoking all day over there at Porky's, and he would just smell and permeate Porky's barbecue in that seat, and I would be much hungrier after the meeting than I was prior to it. But yeah, I echo your points and congratulations on the start of the...
So you guys, would you guys still like this day as Steve White Porky's Barbecue Day?
Sure. It's the resolutions take a little more...
Yeah, I know.
Yep, yep, yep. See what we can do. We will definitely...
Is this tonight that we're going...
Tonight at 6:00 PM. He doesn't know anything that's happened. Nothing wrong with Steve. It's just, guys, he's been a great pillar of this community. Be more people like that, and that's just all it is, guys.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, Dennis New?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. Good afternoon. For over the last year, I've come here and spoke of city-owned buildings and properties in disrespect and disrepair. I spoke about lack of sidewalks and infrastructure needs. All of these things are symptomatic of poor management, poor leadership, and a general disregard for the city in general. The Gannon Report demonstrates damning conditions within the city's fire department. Imagine if the city was conducted, or the study was conducted citywide. Employees in the city won't speak out for fear of being retaliated against or fired. Even the chamber building is now under tarps. Imagine if it was a taxpayer's home. I'm sure code enforcement would have already written them up. Camp Weewaw is in disrepair and, to the best of my knowledge, is still not ADA compliant. We, as the city, employ an attorney who gives advice contrary to state law to Mr. Wyllam. I believe that's called malpractice. An attorney who believes the taxpayers are the peanut gallery, who believes he can interpret the city charter when he can't even advise within the scope of state statutes. This mismanagement, this malfeasance, this misfeasance, this deplorable line of bad judgment has cost the life of one young man, a death that falls directly on the lack of oversight and proper management this city deserves. I believe that the Gannon Report is but a scratch on the surface of the issues plaguing this city. The issues are systemic. Lack of proper leadership is the cause. Now, today on the agenda, an item regarding the Florida Economic Consortium, an organization which shares an address with a fellow named Mr. Rod Love, a well-known political operative friend of the mayor's. Was there a bid process for this type of contract, or is this just a political payback thing? As a taxpayer, I expect better controls on this type of issue. The mayor being allowed to reward his political cohorts is beyond reproach. It should not be allowed. I encourage the council to vote no on this item until such time as some sort of process is developed for handling these types of things. Today, I encourage the council to terminate the employment of the city attorney. I call for the termination or resignation of Mr. Wyllam, Mr. Howe, and yes, now, I call for the resignation of Mayor Nelson for total lack of proper management and oversight.
Rod Olson?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Several topics today. First, to starting off, I've noticed today it looks like eight new development proposals. I challenge the commission to look at all these proposals, to challenge and ask themselves these three questions before they approve. One, how will the citizens of Apopka benefit? Two, how will our children benefit? You know, I'm going on schools, the fights at Apopka High School, the fact that Wolf Lake Middle and Elementary School opened with 42 portables in 2006, and the first they're not using all those portables is now because Kelly Park opened. Have they closed out or removed any of those trailers? No, because of the development we keep approving. If you notice on the site plan for Kelly Park Schools, they also have sites build up for 12 possible portables. It's not right. If you can't answer firmly to all three, stop making excuses and approving new developments until you can. Talking about Northwest Recreational Complex turf, I've emailed all of you, I'm not going to beat this horse to death, but the field's in their worst condition ever. They're being used year-round. It's been years since they've done the winter reseeding and letting the fields rest. The fields are horrible. It used to be it was like a golf green. I compared it like a golf green. Now it's like the rough. Saturday Sounds, a little shout-out there, Buddy Blues is on this weekend. If you've not heard him, he is wonderful. And on the Gannon Reports, I've read all three ports line by line. We got a lot of work to do. We need to stop making excuses and pointing fingers and take some action. And further, the Gannon Report may just be the tip of the iceberg. We need to look at each and every department, how they're operating, address the issues with morale, the turnover that we have in departments. We need to take a real look at what and how our people feel. Mr. Duran, you and your family, I am so sorry for what has happened. It's a shame that to say that you and your family have been more compassionate and understanding than the city has been to you, and that's criminal in my eyes. Now, I know that there's a number of people in leadership in the city that would like to speak out but are under a gag order. That's unfortunate and criminal. You and your family, continuing my thoughts and prayers. I wish you all the best of luck and Godspeed, sir.
Alex Klepper?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. The Apopka Professional Firefighters Executive Board conducted a polling of our membership and a confidence vote regarding the continued leadership of Fire Chief Sean Wyllam. My name is Alex Klepper. I'm the president of this organization. Your union members make up nearly 90% of the active workforce with greater than six months on the job. The results of that polling came back with 85% voting in the affirmative that they have no confidence that Fire Chief Sean Wyllam has the competence and abilities to lead the Apopka Fire Department forward and provide a safe and proactive environment for continued well-managed growth. Let us be clear that we don't feel that Fire Chief Sean Wyllam is a bad person or acts with malicious intent, but it has become clear and apparent that he is and has been incapable of competently managing the men and women who have dedicated and given their lives in service to the Apopka Fire Department. A fire chief must excel under pressure, something we have loads of at the current moment with lost growth and extreme changes needed, but as you said, Mayor, Fire Chief Wyllam is not good under pressure. The material I provided you with today explains our position, but allow me to summarize. Chief Wyllam, on his first and last tour of the Apopka Fire Stations, handed out a card and printed on it was "My Commitment to You." It is our majority opinion that he has failed on each and every one of the accompanying bullet points. Chief Wyllam has failed to listen to his firefighters, brief family members, third-party industry-leading experts, and city commissioners on countless occasions, yet we know he's capable, since he does without question Michael Rodriguez and Mayor Nelson. Chief Wyllam has failed to fully and truthfully share information with this council, firefighters, the Duran family, and we've previously cited false claims of completion of problems brought forward by the Safety Committee, but can also reference many misleading or false claims in response to the Gannon Report and presentations made here at this council. Chief Wyllam has failed to communicate any clear vision, values, or intent. He's failed to carry out or execute any strategic plan, professional development, leadership, succession, structural direction in his tenure. His decisions are consistently reactionary and hard to map out. His antics and presentations during budget periods have been a disheartening source of frustration and bewilderment for our firefighters. Chief Wyllam has failed to value the participation of our firefighters and has twice now asked directly or indirectly for their personal input and in reaction attempted to bury those statements. He has shamefully failed to stand up for or defend his firefighters who are suffering a tragedy when they're referred to as soft or having garbage opinions, or when the mayor deliberately misquotes them during an embarrassing press conference. Chief Wyllam has failed to do the right thing. Doing the right thing is making the hard ask in this room and not forcing those below you in position to do the work for you while you shamelessly take credit. More importantly, the right thing is always take care of your people. Doing the right thing is being at your firefighter's side when they're hurt, ill, or on life support, and not having to ask others if you should come or not, and certainly not leaving town for conference. I'm sorry. How long until you get in touch with Ty's family? What's it gonna take? Tired of why we always have to do this job. I don't understand any... It's like there's no soul back there. I don't get it. Sorry. Chief Wyllam has failed to hold himself accountable for anything. He has failed in accountability to Austin, his family, and to us. He's taken no accountability for failures in training, safety, planning, staffing, organizational structure, and he unconscionably accepted a flawless annual performance evaluation. This department needs a strong, creative, compassionate, proactive, and professional fire chief. We need help in managing the massive changes we're prepared to undergo, and we need a leader that can envision a plan, accept contribution to that plan, and execute. At the end of the day, we ask you to remove Sean Wyllam from this position as fire chief so that when the next family member, wife, child, or friend asks us if my loved one dies or needs help, we also have to fight so hard for the right thing to be done, and we won't have to hang our heads in fear of that answer. Thank you.
Michael Duran?
Who is running this city? Yet again, against everyone's wishes, not one, but two, Gannon workshops were canceled within 24 hours of the actual workshop. Commissioner Becker sat in the last city council meeting and stressed to the mayor that this workshop should not take place. We all agree. The Gannon Report is not up for negotiation. You hired them to come in to do a report, and they did it. Did you think that it was going to be covered in roses? My son died on your administration. Did you think that they were not going to find any fault? Why the need to have these workshops, and even according to the mayor, so that we may add stuff or have Gannon remove stuff? Mr. Mayor, there is nothing that you can add. The report is full. Becker was correct in his email that he sent to the city attorney. Our city attorney did not have the foresight to not have this meeting. The first meeting was scheduled and then canceled. Why did our city attorney, after the first one, not get with the mayor and let him know that we should never schedule one of these again? Why is it the city attorney feels that he needs to interject himself and interfere with our fire department that if we're not doing a workshop, that we'll travel all the way down to Port St. Lucie and we'll talk with Gannon down there, under a cover of night, at a public view? That is unacceptable. Becker owes no apologies to the city nor the attorney. Mr. Rodriguez feels that he needs to fire back an email at Commissioner Becker demanding an apology. He goes on to basically rant about his feelings and how he is upset, how he is being treated that some social media page posted a cameo-like video of him dancing around in his underwear that his wife and his children saw, and he is upset. None of that has anything to do with this. He further refers to us as the Peanut Gallery. By definition, the Peanut Gallery is a group of people who criticize someone by focusing on insignificant details. Let me assure you and this city attorney, what we discuss is of most significance. Do not minimize the death of my son as insignificant, having referred to me and the people to stand up in this city demanding change. We are not the Peanut Gallery. We are the people. We elected you to do your job. Who is running this city? Why is it? Every time I come here, we get resistance from day one. Don't even think it's about the claim that the Duran family has issued to the city. This resistance was before that. Your resistance provoked that. Why is it? And maybe it's because you don't know Austin the way we do. That's my son. That's what you did. Look at it! You can't even look at it, and my family has to live with it. Our department has to live with this. You're in action. Our city attorney did not have the foresight to not have this meeting. The first meeting was scheduled and then canceled. Why did our city attorney, after the first one, not get with the mayor and let him know that we should never schedule one of these again? Why is it the city attorney feels that he needs to interject himself and interfere with our fire department that if we're not doing a workshop, that we'll travel all the way down to Port St. Lucie and we'll talk with Gannon down there, under cover of night, at a public view? That is unacceptable. Becker owes no apologies to the city, nor the attorney. Mr. Rodriguez feels that he needs to fire back an email at Commissioner Becker demanding an apology. He goes on to basically rant about his feelings and how he is upset, how he is being treated that some social media page posted a cameo-like video of him dancing around in his underwear that his wife and his children saw, and he is upset. None of that has anything to do with this. He further refers to us as the Peanut Gallery. By definition, the Peanut Gallery is a group of people who criticize someone by focusing on significant insignificant details. Let me assure you and this city attorney, what we discuss is of most significance. Do not minimize the death of my son as insignificant, have referred to me and the people to stand up in this city demanding change. We are not the Peanut Gallery. We are the people. We elected you to do your job. Who is running this city? Why is it every time I come here, we get resistance from day one? Don't even think it's about the claim that the Duran family has issued to the city. This resistance was before that. Your resistance provoked that. Why is it? And maybe it's because you don't know Austin the way we do. That's my son. That's what you did. Look at it! You can't even look at it, and my family has to live with it. Our department has to live with this. You're in actions. Our fire chief is not qualified to make changes. He never visited Austin. He never reached out to our family, nor did the mayor. Any meeting that was taken, it was on my initiation. Organizations such as the American Lung Association, the FRT Training Group that trains our paramedics, local restaurants, businesses, have all reached out to my family in support. This administration has done nothing. We bend over backwards, spent over a half a million dollars bringing the Clydesdells to Apopka to try to bring some unity. What has the city done? What is the city going to do? This is the day. You heard the president from the union. There is no confidence in this fire chief. Mr. Mayor, you stated in the last city council meeting that you wanted to either add or take things out of the Gannon Report, and you said you wanted to do it for transparency. And we all now know that was another lie. You also said that you wanted Gannon and the city to produce a report, and I quote you, that we can be proud of. We are not proud. Apopka is not proud. You are destroying it. You took Austin, you destroyed our family forever, and you're destroying the fire department. Accept accountability. Allow our Safety Committee to get back on task. And hire Gannon's Services. They are the consulting company that you picked. You picked them, not me, and not them. You. They came in, they gave you an assessment, you don't like it, have them fix it. Hire Gannon's Services. That's the way we fix this. Thank you.
Ace Woodham, 47 East Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida. I don't know if I have much else to say than what's been said, but if you'll but look back at the commissioner meetings, look back at our conversations, we talked about this. This thing's going on for four years, people, about his ability to run the fire department and the concerns of the safety of the firefighters. Four years, but it took the death of a young, brilliant, future firefighter's life to get this far, and we're still not settled. Brian, you need to walk out with your head up high as fast as you can. This is ridiculous. I've said it before, and you know it. I've said it at these commission meetings standing right here. He's not capable of doing it, guys. And the bad part about it is the commissioners don't have the authority to turn this employment. Only you can do it. And you've put in our citizens have more chances of getting hurt, or our firefighters, by leaving him there, and we're still paying him $150,000 a year to do nothing. We're paying you $100 and something thousand a year to do nothing. And this man here, I don't know what he does, except insult people. I have no use for him. I can find a better lawyer down here on the corner. But Brian, please, and you know in your heart, we've talked, and we've talked, and we've talked in this chamber. People, we gotta do something. This community has gone to hell. Y'all stretched the PD out, y'all keep adding land. How can they cover it? I mean, people's cars are getting broke in right downtown Apopka here. I just heard the conversation today, catalytic converters getting stolen in town, and they 'll just walk up and take it off the car. But guys, y'all got to do something. The fire department is a bunch of good, very good, professional firefighters. These guys deserve to be represented by someone who can handle that fire department. And I'm like, I said this before also, I'm not saying Sean's a bad guy, but he has no leadership skills. We need someone in there to protect our guys and girls that work 24 hours a day to protect us. We are letting them down. You let them down, Brian.
Albert McKimmy.
Today, I would like to discuss some legalese. I don't exactly understand the full significance of it because it was written in Latin, but let me tell you what I saw. Respondi superior, quae fer parium faci per se. Translated for those not branded as members of the Peanut Gallery, vicarious liability. The court defines vicarious liability in Florida. As an employer is vicariously liable if an employee's act, if the employee was acting to further the employer's interests at the time of the incident. Was Austin Duran engaged in carrying out a task on behalf of his employer at the time of his incident? Yes. Was he given training for this prior to that instruction? No. Therefore, is Chief Wyllam vicariously liable? Fire Chief Wyllam is employed by the City of Apopka. The mayor, by not disputing Sean Wyllam receiving a perfect score of six in his evaluation, by inference sees the chief's actions as being in line with his employer's requirement. As such, the mayor sees the City of Apopka as being compliant with safety standards. Is the City of Apopka and Brian Nelson vicariously liable for the death of firefighter Austin Duran? Let's speak about professionalism. Recent comments by the city attorney are disrespectful to the residents of Apopka and the commissioners. Our tax dollars pay for his salary. His arrogance is unacceptable. Some of his comments in quotation marks, the first when it was suggested he should resign. Do I really have to deal with this crap? This was delivered by the mayor and other members, delivered to the mayor and other members of the administration by email, which was then passed on to a concerned female resident by Brian Nelson, thus demeaning any further interaction she has with administration. As for the reference to the members who regularly question his integrity and suitability for this position, he refers to us as the Peanut Gallery, not an affectionate term of endearment. Substitution. It would appear Chris Gannon is not the only person to face bushback at the hands of this city attorney. I contend that I am facing obstruction in obtaining details about the reason Michael Rodriguez's substitution in representing a case on behalf of the city. I'm not interested in the details of the litigation. I'm interested in the details which I believe could lead to an investigation by the Florida Bar and possible disciplinary action against the city attorney. Since the city attorney is an employee of the commission, he cannot behind hide behind employee-client privilege. If they request the details, it is alleged he was unable to continue representing the city because in quotes, he had previously had discussions with a pursuant and is now being called as a witness. Surely not against the city. I do not appreciate the city having to use our tax dollars to engage another city attorney when we already paying one who appears to be very conversant with the law. In fact, I remember he recently schooled Commissioner Diane Vasquez on the very subject of conversations with a pursuant in a case of litigation. He was quite clear he or his office could not have direct contact or email traffic with the Duran family. Recusal. A voluntary act of removing oneself from a situation or a vote where there might be a conflict of interest. A recent city records request showed one recusal since January 2021. How much advice is the city attorney providing the mayor and the commissioners? Are his legal opinions in some cases even valid, or are they filled with deliberate errors of omission, misrepresentation, and even lies? With respect to his own position and disciplinary action by the commission, we will eagerly await to hear his interpretation as correct, or just another lot of lies and misrepresentations.
Believe it or not, it's a beautiful day. It's a great day for me to hear the community come out with passion and get involved with what's going on in the community, because it's greatly needed in the City of Apopka and it's greatly needed in our country today. Too many people seeing bad things happen and send by in the comfort of their own quality of life and not speaking up for their neighbor, and it's a shame on all of us. When you tell your veterans, thank you for your service, what do that mean? Do we say things so it just roll off our tongues and make us sound good? When we stand up here every time and we say indivisible, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, what do that mean when we know it's not true for everybody? What we say with such a cool, calm, collected, and make us feel good? Well, when we start normalizing the abnormal, we start desensitizing the truth, and that's what is happening in our country, and that's what is happening here in the City of Apopka. I mentioned before about the hostile work environment, what it creates. Take a look, and see don't everything that you just heard today is represented up there? And it's sad, but here's the, here's the, here's the, here's what's sad. It's not the first time it's been said. It's been, it's been said over and over and over and over. So now, I always say accountability. It's not to point blame, but it's to have accountability to correct a wrong. So now, I don't look at Chief Wyllam anymore, and I don't look at the mayor anymore because the mayor don't made it perfectly clear to everyone how he feel about the situation by his leadership on this situation. So now, I'm looking at my four commissioners up here. What are you gonna do about the issue? Commissioner Vasquez, you said before, you're tired of hearing the same old thing. Well, how long you gonna let it go on? One thing I was very disappointed, because I wasn't here last, the last city council meeting, but Mr. Rodriguez over here, when Mr. Commissioner Becker tried to hold him accountable for all this disrespect, for your other three commissioners that failed on deaf ears, and that greatly disappointed me. And it disappointed me on you, Commissioner, because you are the alone, beautiful female that we have on the board here. And if I come up here and stand up for you, I at least expect you to stand up for yourself. And that's speaking from the heart. So now, with all you have heard, it's time for accountability. Commissioners, it's on you now. I want everybody to start looking at you guys to see what are you gonna do, because this can only go on by you allowing it to go on. And it's time for it to stop. It's time for it to stop. You either leave, follow, or get out of the way. So I would say we need to make a motion to replace the fire chief. We need to make a motion to get rid of the city attorney, and that needs to be done today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My topic this afternoon, I'm going to state to everybody so you can have some sense coherently of what I'm trying to say. So I'll start with the title, and that is zoning, land use, and the markers, best practices that lead to great livable cities. That's the topic. I'm an amateur here, and I'm gonna make several assertions which probably can be refuted, but I'll try. Okay. On today's agenda, there are references to zoning changes linked to planned development applications submitted for Apopka City action. In the mode of a primer for citizens, could you please teach to the issue of zoning and planned development applications? Does that mean now, but sometime? Okay, several issues. First, and this is, this is elementary. Everybody can probably chime in and say, well, yes, this probably needs to be something we can learn about. What is zoning fundamentally, and what is its purpose? In view of the rapidity, that's the first point. Second point, in view of the rapidity with which Apopka City changes zoning at the behest of applicants who want to use their land for gain, what does zoning mean for city officials these days? Three, how has the zoning dynamic changed over time vis-à-vis the comprehensive plan? For example, a PUD used to be considered sacrosanct, impervious to alteration or change. So we Rock Springs Ridge residents were advised over time, and by the way, we at Rock Springs Ridge has been immersed in a struggle, a crisis, for how long? How long? 14 years and counting. Is this provision any longer true? Four, to what extent have zoning changes and the dynamic that drives them served to expedite a quote, "Build, build, build, grow, grow, grow as fast as we can go," growth and development mantra? Five, is there an observed checklist the city growth and development surgeons, I'm using the word surgeons figuratively, and you'll see why in just a moment, are observing to mitigate the chances of disastrous surgical mistakes that will jeopardize the body politic over time? I'm drawing an analogy to surgeons and the field of medicine, medical care. Okay? A sort of urban development Hippocratic oath. Everybody here probably knows about Hippocratic oath. Everybody knows what that is, and it's fundamental bedrock to good medical care over time in our beloved country, and that is what? Do no harm to our environment, to our water. to our environment, to our water resources, to our green space in the name, in the name of stewardship of God's green earth. And, and this is a big one. These days, very big in Florida, it's huge, to our precious, beautiful children and our public schools. And I'll testify, I've been an educator, a teacher, I was, 44 years in public schools. And I'll go to bat to the day I die for public school teachers and public, and public schools. They built America. Yes, they did. And no, they're not denizens of woke, whatever the hell woke is supposed to mean. They're denizens of hope and they're, they're the sports system for democracy, man's best hope.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'll conclude. Just a second, other people had more time, I'm gonna take my time. There is thus a moral imperative in play here. I urge you to respectfully consider these questions and issues. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we got six consent agenda items.
Well, before we move on, and I'm just not gonna accept that we do this every single meeting, but first off, I want to apologize, I want to make an apology to all of the senior staff that were in city council or city hall yesterday for my behavior. I had a private meeting with another staff member that turned unprofessional on both sides. And so that, I apologize, and I apologize to the member in this, in this, in this chamber whose meeting that was as well. I'm passionate about things and a lot of that stems along what was discussed in this room tonight, one of which is being accused of politics, right? I'm not gonna sit up here and say that I don't play politics, I'm a politician. I try and use politics for good purposes versus bad, but you know, there's politics involved in running a city. And, you know, to be accused of that, I don't, I don't know what, I've always tried to take the, the practical steps to the serving in this position. What I would say is that we don't air this publicly in the, in the council chambers like this, but I do think that this council needs to sit behind closed doors and have a frank conversation with each other. Outside of the, you know, public scrutiny so that we feel like we're posturing or, or any of that, not, not claiming that's taking the place, but I do think that potentially after a public hearing today, we enter into an executive session so that we're talking, because I would like to talk on two HR terms. And not air all of those thoughts out for the public realm, but for us to sit back like we did a few weeks back and have an executive session where we can talk through these things. I want to lay out what my experience has been with certain members of the senior staff that I feel passionate that they are no longer, I, they no longer have my trust and they serve this whole body at total. I want to be able to, to let you all know of those grievances to this, this council and for us to make a decision. Ultimately, like the point was made earlier, you know, the current interpretation on the city attorney serving at the pleasure of the council is the interpretation of the and statement, meaning that the mayor has the final say regardless of whether or not this council votes to do that or not. And then we have zero authority over the fire chief as people have called for his resignation. So I want to have a frank conversation with this council. So before we move forward, I would move that we have executive session following the public hearing section of this meeting today so that we can have that conversation and be frank. Because this, this is not sustainable. People need to know that we're, we're being definitive on a topic and moving forward. This is not sustainable regardless of whether or not public comment is at the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting. Let's just have the conversation. It's gonna be a tough one, don't get me wrong, but we all need to verbalize our thoughts to each other. I would move, I would move that we have that executive session. With, with the members of the city council as well as our city clerk for document, meaning minute purposes.
I would second that. Are we, don't we have to notice that first or something, or what is that, how's that work?
I don't think we have.
A meeting as such as proposed is inconsistent with the sunshine law. A local government can only have an executive session to discuss settlement negotiations and relating to litigation. You don't have the luxury of having a private meeting to discuss matters that are not related to litigation. It's, it's not permissible under Chapter 286 Florida statutes.
Florida statutes. So the, the point that I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to be respectful of claims that I'm playing politics here. What I want to do is, this shouldn't be aired out in front of the public realm at this point. Maybe the outcome of that conversation should be, but I don't care what vehicle it is, if it's not executive session by name, what opportunity do we have, if it's a meeting in the shade, executive session, what have you, for us to have that conversation and prevent it from being in the, in the public realm.
No, there's, there, no. Florida's sunshine laws are very strong. And, and if, if the collegiate body is meeting, it must meet in the sunshine unless it falls under the explicit exceptions under the statute. And one of those, one is collective bargaining discussions, and the other one is to discuss settlement of pending litigation. That's why when the two executive sessions that we noticed were specifically tied to specific cases and the discussion was solely limited to that. Plus, you're not gonna be able to keep it behind closed doors because in an executive session, the matter is, the matter is recorded, is transcribed by a court reporter, and then it is made public at the conclusion of the litigation or the dependency that, that's being discussed. In this case, there is no conclusion. So I, I cannot advise you to have such a meeting. Such a meeting will be outside of the sunshine and will, will expose each and every one of you to civil or potential criminal liability.
Okay, a, a simple, it's not permissible would have sufficed. what I'm saying is that I'm trying to do the right thing here, there'll be HR sensitive topics discussed. So if we want to table, I'll table it until the city council report section, I'll bring it there and we can air all of our grievances. I'll do that then.
Okay, we've got six consent agenda items. Look for motion to approve, somebody needs to pull any of them.
No, I just wanted to reference the orchestra coming up that we will be selling tables again there, so it's gonna make sure that's, it's known, it's happening, so it's exciting. I really liked that last time, so just let that be known to the public that that will be marketed here soon as well.
Yes.
So.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Well, number four and number five, which is school concurrency mitigation agreement. What is, what does that mean? Just a brief. It says approve Kelly Park South School concurrency mitigation and authorize the mayor to sign agreement. And number five, approve the Ridge School concurrency mitigation. Just a, a brief. What does that mean?
Commissioner, this is the agreement item for, if you recall, whenever you get a property entitled, they go through a school capacity process. And once they get a major development plan and plot recorded, they need to have a concurrency agreement with the school. So this is actually the state required concurrency agreement that each project has to go through. Because it's a tri-party agreement, the school board, the city, and the developer has to sign it all. So this here, the Ridge as well as Kelly Park South.
Right.
They all have gone through entitlements and development reviews, and I believe they all are ready to be plotted. But the agreements have to be executed and payments are due at a certain deadline before all that, all the plating is, is recorded and approved.
So they have to, so the developers have to pay OCTS?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Yep, it's in the delineated in the agreement itself, they have a certain deadline for a certain amount.
All right. Thank you.
All right, look for motion to approve, approve the six consent agenda items?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, major development plan, Natura Vista.
Oh, okay.
Are you on, this is yours?
Okay.
We, I guess we go on to number two then, the second one.
Okay.
So, so which, which, are you on the first? Okay, we're, we're coming right now, we'll be, we're on it. No, 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 no. I don't know what, I don't know what you're, you want me to just postpone you, make you come up second? Would that help? Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead. Okay, we'll, we'll take up the major development plan, North Star Logistics Center, two. Gene. You can go ahead and go.
I don't know, he's waiting for somebody.
His attorney. Oh, oh, his attorney. Okay. Go ahead.
Do you want me to go with North Star?
Okay, we'll go, let's, let's, let's go back to the original. Okay. Natura Vista, Gene.
Apologies. All righty, Gene Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Natura Vista Major Development Plan. The property is located on the southeast corner of Wilkins Street and Orange Blossom Trail, approximately 3.09 acres in size. Aerial shows residential uses on the north and east, Windward Hills planned development on the south, and Orlando Apopka Airport in the west. The major development plan details the construction of 46 multifamily units within the MUESGT Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Sub District. The project consists of two apartment buildings and two garage buildings with a proposed building height of almost 40 feet. A total of 69 parking spaces are required, and the applicant is proposing 98 spaces, including four accessible spaces. The major development plan shows a side along the project frontage on State Road 441 connectin, connect, a sidewalk, I'm sorry, connecting to an internal walkway and a continuation of the sidewalk to the Wilkins Street frontage. The applicant is required to preserve 0.3 acre, 10% of the project area for active and passive recreation for this size. The applicant is proposing approximately one acre for a dog park and green space. State Road 441 and, 441 and Wilkins frontages are decorated with a mix of southern magnolias and crape myrtles, as well, as well as winged alms adorn the landscaped parking islands. This project will have two full access connections to Wilkins Street, which is more than adequate to serve the development of this size. The applicant is required to rebuild Wilkins Street and widen slightly so it meets minimum city standards. A right turn lane will be, will be striped on Wilkins Street so the through movement and right turn movement on the westbound Wilkins are separate, are separate lanes. A modified right turn lane will be constructed on US 441 to allow drivers wishing to make a right turn on Wilkins to move right out of the lane of traffic while making the turn. The architectural rendering shown here meet the city's development design guidelines. DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February 14th, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Natura Vista Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Gene?
I, for projects like this, I know that for other residential properties, things like that, we require pools, things like that. Why is this one not similar?
It's the number of units, there's a threshold on the code. If I recall correctly, I think if you reach 250 count, you're required to have a certain number that includes a pool, and anything above that, you're required to have another set of amenities.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gene? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Come on down. Well, I tell you what, let's, before, I just want you to sit down right here, let's let the applicant come up, if you want to go ahead and make your presentation first, and if we've got a lot of public comment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record, Kim Fisher, 1614 White Dove Drive, Winter Springs. I am the engineer. On behalf of the owner who was also here, we agree with staff. We think staff are working with us on this property. I'm here for any technical questions, and then we would like to reserve time for a rebuttal if so needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, come on up.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia. I, I, I look at these plans and I see an apartment and I hear about parking spaces that don't even add up to two parking spaces per unit. And virtually every unit that's gonna be rented, it's gonna have two vehicles because everybody works anymore. It also enters and exits onto Wilkins Road. Now, for those of you that have lived here long enough, know that Wilkins Road was the second driveway to the McDonald property. It wasn't a street. It's not that well improved with the underlying, and there's no way out the back. We're gonna dump these cars out onto 441, across the street from the airport, right down the road from the Mobile Home Park, there's no light there. We're adding to the traffic congestion, there's not enough parking spaces. How long are we gonna keep cramming these places in?
Okay, David Crossen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Saw that raise up there earlier, I don't know how that happened. Oh, technology. My name is Dave Crossen. I'm one of the property owners and pilots out at the airport, and I'm also on the HOA Board at the airport. We were here speaking back December, a year, over a year ago on this project, and I just point out some of the same issues or questions or points that we had brought up at that time. And that is that, of course, our goal is to maintain the value of the airport for the city and for the community for, in perpetuity. Healthy and viable airport is good for everyone. Not many cities have a little airport such as Apopka. The closest one would be Clearover at Orlando Executive, or up at Leesburg, or all the way over to Sanford. It, but it's a well-established fact that when you mix residential use and airports, there will be problems later. Everyone starts complaining about the noise. I didn't realize that they had jets. I didn't realize they had turboprops. Well, we do. Every one of those apartment unit owners will have an issue with noise down the road. Fortunately, there are already codes that speak to the separation of residential use and airports. The Florida statute speaks to it. The Florida Department of Transportation speaks to it. And Apopka's own code speaks to it, which is modeled after the Florida Department of Transportation. All of these codes agree that if you're gonna build residential use, you need, and you're not, and you don't have a noise study, a real noise study, then you have to stay half the length of the runway away from the property. Well, as I'll point out here, the runway is about 2,000 feet, roughly. These buildings end up being roughly 500 feet, but it's maybe I'm off on 100 feet or something, but it's certainly not 2,000 feet as it should be. So these are, these are close by. These guys are not only gonna hear engine noise, they're gonna hear the pilot when he turns the key in the cockpit, he's gonna hear the key click. This is how close these are to the airport. A noise study, if it's performed, is not just a simple task. The federal code covers that, the FAA under 14 CFR 150. They tell you how to do a noise study. It's complicated and expensive, 65 decibels is the standard, and you have to have a five year projection. Well, the airport is only two-thirds built out. There's plenty of room for expansion of the airport or for additional aircraft at the airport, so any noise study will need to look into the future as well. The list, the codes, I'll leave, I don't have one copy, but I'll leave it here with the, this person at the end, because I'm sure you all familiar with the codes. We're asking that Apopka look at its code and apply the code to this property, and I think you'll find that a noise study is required before anything can be approved here. Thank you for your time.
My name's Gregory Kelsso. I'm also a owner at the Orlando Apopka Airport, and I have here a copy of your code. And your code was adopted on March 6th, 2019. I'm really surprised that staff would say, oh, we're all for this, without having told you that your code specifically says whether the city of Apopka has conducted a noise study in accordance with Provision 14 CF Part 150. And I don't think you have. And I don't think you have, we haven't heard that you have. So we'll go down to the next section of your code, E, Noise Study Incomplete, where the city of Apopka has not conducted a noise study, neither residential construction nor any educational facility, as defined in this code, with the exception of an aviation school facility, shall be permitted within an area contiguous to the airport, measuring one-half the length of the longest runway on either side and at the end of the runway centerline. There's your code. So your code says, no, you can't do this until that noise study is set. And so it is your code. So if you decided you wanted to say, it's our code, we'll just change our code, or just not apply our code, I thought I would share with you, this is Chapter 333, Airport Zoning from the state of Florida, Section 333.03. 333.03, Section 2C, where an airport authority or the other governing body operating a public use airport has conducted a noise study in accordance with 14 CFR Part 150, not just any noise study, it has to meet that. And as we know, you, you haven't done it, and we, as the owners and operators of our airport, haven't done it. So let's go to 2D, where the airport authority or other governing body operating a public use airport has not conducted a noise study. The prohibition of residential construction and any educational facility, with the exception of aviation school facility, within an area contiguous to the airport, measuring one-half the length of the longest runway on either side and the end of the runway centerline. Once again, you, you, you can only be that distance away from the airport. So you can't approve this, this residence, it's 500 feet away. It's not the distance it needs to be away, according to your code and according to the state code. In addition to that, considerations when issuing or denying permits, this is under the Florida code, it says, in determining whether an issue to deny a permit, the political subdivision or its administrative agency must consider the following as applicable. And under Section D, it says, the effect of the construction or alteration on the state licensing standards for the public use airport contained in Chapter 330 and the rules adopted thereunder. So it's saying to you, it's saying you, as a, your consideration of denying a permit of a political subdivision, that would be you, it is saying you cannot do that unless you consider this section, Section 330, and the rules thereunder. We know that there was a point in time where the developer tried to say, we didn't qualify as an airport under the rules of that section. But we will tell you that we certainly have had our attorneys look at that, and we do know we qualify under that. And recently, I contacted a member of the Florida State Legislature. He had Section 333.30 reviewed, and he said XO4 does absolutely qualify as an airport under that section. Thank you very much for your consideration. Have a great day.
Michael, you want to, do you want to finish out this? What do you, do you want to address?
Jim was going to make the presentation based on the language in our code.
Okay. You want, you want to wait till we finish up with public comment?
Probably best to let, let it go forward.
All right. I think we had a couple other folks that wanted to speak.
At a recent, Albert McKibbe, 3603 Golden Gem Road, at a recent workshop, we were discussing the proliferation of developments within the city. At that particular workshop, I think we spoke about 5,000 new homes being provided. But at that same workshop, we were told that there's no infrastructure for education yet. There hadn't been a single school designed, or where it's going to be situated, or where or when it's going to be implemented. I find it rather alarming that we're continuing to develop properties without providing infrastructure for schooling. Thank you.
Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. I just want to speak for the record, the last time we was having discussions like this, and I brought up, we should have some type of consultant, because it's kind of embarrassing when we got the member of the public coming in and reading us our code that we should already know, and then they don't apply those codes before we bring it up here to the council. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Is that it for public comment? Okay, Jim, you want to?
Just got to lower it where I can actually see the microphone. When we did the rezoning for this property, we actually deferred the noise study to the applicant to complete. In addition to that, in accordance with our code, where noise studies are incomplete, the property has to be contiguous to the airport. This is across the 441. It's not directly adjacent to the property itself. So the noise study itself will end up showing where the, where the waves and where the noise. Jim, let me, let me take a little correction. Okay. So the way the code is written, it's, it's an area, in an area contiguous to the runway, to the sides of the runway, so it's, it's, and the end of the runway. So without a noise study, you're going to go 1,000 feet from the edge of the runway, out on either side, and then 1,000 feet from each end of the runway. So that's your area. If you don't have a noise study that creates kind of the noise contours, the way to explain a noise study is, it's like a bowl, and then you can make those uses. So under our, our code, under the airport zoning, that's the, the kids that, and this is something I've discussed with staff, that perhaps we need to come back and look for, look for perhaps the creation of an airport overlay zone, so that certain, certain regulations will cover areas that are adjacent to the airport. At least as far as the airport zoning code, the zoning district is concerned, it, it has that 1,000-foot kind of a, it's, I best call it a buffer, that's measured from the end of the runway. So you're measuring about 1,000 feet, so there, I mean, it's up to the applicant to show that, that the, that, that distance requirement from residential use. Now, the code doesn't necessarily say it's to the property line, so it's not clear, is it to the residential use? So if you have an additional buffer from the actual use to the actual end of the runway, do you fall within that contiguous zone, that 1,000-foot surrounding zone that's enumerated in the airport zoning code? Is there airport zoning districts, sorry? I think I was in, is it, it's a two, it's an actual, it's a 4,000? So that's the full, I mean, I was given the information, originally, I think, when speaking with someone, it was, I was given the information, it was like a 2,000-foot operating runway, but if it's 4,000, then yes, it's half, so it's a, it's a 2,000-foot buffer. I'm just explaining what, what it's, so the area begins contiguous to the runway, that just half the distance of the runway out on both sides of the runway, and half the distance out from the ends of the runway. And that creates your buffer around, around the runway. And that, but that changes if a noise study is done, then the noise study gives you your noise contours. Now, at the same time, the legislature is now contemplating statutes to kind of absolve certain airports from some noise complaints in regards to adjacent residential uses. So that's currently working its way through the legislature as well, to take that into consideration.
So until they complete the noise study, it's, it's on hold, regardless of what we do?
They won't be developing it until they, they won't, yeah, they won't be developing it until they actually complete the noise study.
Actual noise study, which, if they don't, if it fails, then?
Correct it, yeah, this is the major development plan, and we still have the construction plan. They've got to have everything completed before they get the approvals. The noise study may actually alter. Once a noise study is conducted, you don't apply that, the 2,000-foot buffer, because your noise study is going to then measure what the noise, you create a noise contour, and then you're going to make your regulations based on what your noise contour study shows.
So they would basically put out a noise meter at wherever the building, one of the floor?
I cannot attest how the FAA studies are done.
Mayor, as part of the rezoning for this property during that discussion, I think it was 2020 when they began the application, they conducted a noise study before the rezoning was, I believe, adopted as part of that approval. Because I think we required it at the time, and staff deferred, because we didn't have the resources, staff deferred the requirement of the noise study to the applicant, and they submitted it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I'm trying, they might be two different, just in my prior experience in working with airport zoning codes, usually if you're an owner of a property that, in, in my former case, that fell within an airport overlay district, the FAA actually requires you to do a noise study as well as a height and obstruction study on your property before you develop, if you fall within a certain contour. But this is a noise study that is applicable to the airport. So it creates the contours for that airport and all the surrounding areas. So it's not necessarily a noise study that's, that's applicable to the assumed property. It's, it's an airport noise study. It's an FAA airport noise study.
So, so a question for you, could you, let's say you're within, it doesn't meet the noise, the minimum noise or maximum noise limit, can they come back and say, okay, we'll do, instead of double insulated windows, we could do triple insulated? Or how does that, does anybody know how that works?
I mean, it's going to, it's still going to rely on what the contours are, and, and, it's, I, I can't speculate right now.
No, I'm just saying, but is it strictly just, you're, you're here, and the airport's here, it's, it's an X, or can they do any mitigation?
Well, no, it's, it's really limited to the use. So without a noise study, the, the two uses that are what they call restricted uses are educational uses except for aviation, education, and residential.
Right.
You could put commercial, you could put industrial. Those don't apply.
Right.
This is just, it's those two specific restricted uses that are affected by any type of, of noise study.
Okay.
Or the airport noise study, sorry.
And I'm sorry, anybody else have questions for staff?
I think if we can just hear from the applicant, just, because I'm very confused.
Yeah, was the noise study done or not?
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from them and see.
Just one question, when you went before the planning and zoning, was any of this discussed? I mean, why? It wasn't brought up?
Come on up, come on up.
Go ahead.
Put the mic, microphone.
My name is Joe Savino. I represent Natura Vista LLC, the applicant. My address is 1101 North Lake Destiny Road, Maitland. And we, we had a discussion about this at the rezone, which was approved, and at that time, we had conducted this study.
Can you just speak a little louder?
I'm sorry.
If you can raise the lectern so that I can, and thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. We discussed this at the rezone, which was approved last year. We had a noise study completed by RML Acoustics of Gainesville, and I've given you the executive summary of that. Very importantly, from a noise compatibility standpoint, number five in the executive summaries says the airport is compatible with residential use at the proposed site using the FAA noise criteria. Sounds from US 441 and other sources far exceed the sound from the airport. Number four states that even if there were 30 times the number of current flights that occurred at the airport on the days that the site noise measurements were performed, the, the noise levels attributable to the planes at locations R1 and R2, which are shown in the study, would still be below the 65 decibel threshold. Bottom line is, there's a lot of room for growth and, and development of the airport. And that's issue one, is I think we're, we're presenting evidence to you that in fact our use is compatible, a compatible use for noise. However, there's a few other things here that we'd like to discuss. First is, while Mr. Kelso, and I believe Mr. Croson presented here 333.03 of the Florida statutes, which was a mandate to all the municipalities that had airports, small general aviation airports, that they needed to do these kinds of, add this kinds of consideration into their land use ordinances, it's very important that those are all directed at public use airports. And the Florida statutes at 332, 332, 004, define a public use airport as a publicly-owned airport. Apopka Airport, to my knowledge, and they've testified, or they've spoken in previous instances before this body and before the Planning Commission, is privately owned. They're just a private landowner as we are. If you'll bear with me a moment, I can go back to a Planning Commission meeting where both Mr. Kelso and Mr. Croson testified, and they were concerned at that point with a development that they were trying, that they were opposing on the other side, behind them, the other direction, across 441, not on our side of 441. And at that time, Mr. Kelso claimed that we are a public use airport at the bidding of our owners. That could change at any time if our owners made a decision to become a private airport. I wish you would consider that, that they are a condo association, and as one of the gentlemen mentioned this morning, they're not fully sold out. At that time, right now, being public use could be deemed a marketing tool for them. They want to sell those condos. They allow other non-owners to come in and use that airport, but they've not executed a land use restriction agreement, any perpetual agreement, to my knowledge, at least as of 2019, when they testified before the Planning Commission. They did not, they don't, they have, there's no restriction at all that tomorrow they cannot, and you can ask them that right now. There's nothing limiting them from becoming a non-public use. It's at the bidding of their owners. Furthermore, Mr. Kelso stated in that 2019 testimony before the Planning Commission, that the vast majority of our hangars are owned by owners who house their own personal, pleasure, general aviation aircraft, many of whom, most of whom, are smaller than a Honda Civic. And that's what you'll see in that study, is that the decibel level of the, of the lawn mowers that are going to be cutting the lawns around us will actually be higher than what you'll, what our residents would experience from this airport in general. At that time, Mr. Kelso said, it's virtually impossible to imagine a fully loaded cargo plane would safely utilize our runways. And he also stated, this small general aviation airport will never, I repeat, never, need an airport support district. And Mr. Croson stated that, to his understanding, this was, again, he was opposing a development in the other direction, the Rubrite. I don't know if you're all familiar with the Rubrite development, okay? To his understanding, there was an agreement with Zellwood to fly patterns on the west side of the airport. We're on the east side. We have a non-standard pattern at Apopka to accommodate the resident, residential folks at Zellwood, which is just north of us, I believe, directionally challenged. So those, those are the two considerations. Is this a public use airport by definition under Florida statutes for which your own ordinance was mandated? And I believe it's not. And second, are we compatible? Because we've done a noise study, the noise, the, your ordinance says if, if there's a noise study presented, again, it was one that you were supposed to, the city was supposed to prepare. Well, the city hasn't prepared one. Well, the city hasn't prepared one. We did at our expense. The information is there, the evidence is there for you to consider, uh, that there is not a noise compatibility issue. Whether or not this, the other uh issues, the half to the distance of the runway and those kinds of things apply seem to hinge on whether or not this is a public use airport. Doesn't seem to be under Florida statutes that it is. And I wish you would consider that they've made no promises in perpetuity. Could easily easily issue a land use restriction agreement, keep it a public use airport forever. They're not doing that. It's it's just one property owner, one private property owner trying to um impose their will.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ness, look.
I don't know if I have a question, I just, oh, I, this, all of this information was not provided to us. So I do appreciate both staff, um, the the owners across the street and and the applicant educating us on that. I am uncomfortable going one way or the other right now, just because I want to take a deeper dive into all of the statutes that were given to us and kind of understand what that means and make sure that I have a better understanding of it. I, right now, I'm just uncomfortable with um what's been presented. Now, I'm not saying with the project, I'm just, uh, there's a lot of variables that were just presented that I have no um understanding of, nor was it in our our packets either, so.
All right, well, this this similar discussion was had last year when we had the zoning discussion and approval.
I understand. Michael, you got a?
No, I just wanted to to clarify and I guess expand it to to kind of, you know, easily clarify what the applicant's providing. And and the threshold issue is, and now that I've gotten all the facts and based on the prior experiences of handling these airport issues, yes, the the threshold issue is, is this a airport, is is, does it qualify as an airport under the federal regulations, which are then going to trigger how much FAA regulations are on the airport? And whether, um, when we're talking about a noise study to determine the noise contours of an airport, the study is actually performed by the governing agency of the airport. And the airport is not owned by the city of Apopka. So then the question becomes, okay, who, what is the governing airport and what is the definition of airport? Under this, the um federal regulations in fourteen CFR fif- one fifty point seven, airport is any public use airport, including heliports, as defined by the ASNA Act, which includes the first, the first criteria is any airport which is used or to be used for public purposes under the control of a public agency, the landing area of which is publicly owned. So that's the first threshold question is, is the airport here? Um, is it owned by a public agency? The air, the city does not own the airport, the county does not own the airport. Um, then the second, the second criteria is any privately owned airport, but that it's, it is qualified as a privately owned reliever airport. So the question now becomes, is this airport, does it falls into the, what a privately owned reliever airport? Then the third criteria is any privately owned airport, which is determined by the secretary, and it would be the sec, that would be the US Secretary of Transportation, um, to inplane annually twenty-five hundred or more passengers and receive scheduled passenger service of aircraft, which is used or to be used for public purposes. I I don't think the Apopka airport hits that twenty-five hundred passing.
I clarify something, you're reading the federal code. That tells you how to do a noise study. It's the Apoc code, Florida statutes and the Florida Department of Transportation will tell you when you need to do a study. This airport relieving is a public use airport, again, a license renewed every year. Florida Department of Transportation, public use airport, if you look it up on the charts, it's called a public use airport. There should be no question that it's a public use airport. To answer your question, could we elect tomorrow to become a private use airport? Well, who knows? We've been public use for all this time, we have no intention of changing.
Okay.
We do it just despite you know, this has nothing to do with that. We are, to everyone's advantage, we operate as a public use airport. Please don't try to confuse us that that's, that we're not anything but that.
Michael, I'm.
Apoc code to be applied here. And that simply says how good you have to go get a noise study. The FAA says how good, I challenge whether what you have, since we like, we don't see that noise study.
Yeah.
It really complies with the CFR.
I I'm not inferring one way or another, I'm just simply listing what are the the thresholds that the FAA requires to then determine that to certainly studies have to be done pursuant to the federal regulations. And then the state really will defer still and that you provide these studies to the federal. I'm just providing what the thresholds are. At this point, it's is the applicant, is the airport to then determine and to give you the sufficient evidence to determine what, whether they've met that threshold or not, I'm not going to make that, I'm not going to adjudicate whether they've met that threshold or not.
So this is a quasi judicial matter?
No.
Is, or is this legislative?
Yes, as a as a major development plan, this would fall under quasi judicial.
Okay, um, so does staff have any testimony to say that all of the necessary sound studies in accordance to our code and all governing code has been completed and up to the standard of us approving this? Because absent that confirmation, uh, we might be spinning our wheels here.
To my, to my knowledge, staffs informed me that the the a noise study was not conducted, so therefore a noise study, so at twenty twenty, so if a, if the city conducted a noise study. Right, but I'm still, I'm, yeah. Has had to give me the right information, so.
I think I'm I'm kind of agreeing with Commissioner Ness.
I think we'd probably advise to table this matter.
Let's table this matter.
And then we'll readvertise it for the next public meeting.
Yeah, and then we can come back and get all the facts and and then bring it back up. So look for a motion to table this.
So moved.
My Commissioner Ness, the second one, Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Yeah, sure. Yeah, you can have, um. Okay, next up.
And are we then, are we, even though it's quasi judicial, we can still meet with the applicant, correct?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we can.
Yes, you just need a better understanding of everything.
You can meet as long as you disclose your meeting, that's all.
Okay, I don't know if any of the other commissioners want to meet, but I would love to meet with you guys before the next meeting, just to kind of get a better understanding of everything as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, major development plan, North Star Logistics Center two. Gene?
Gene Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the North Star Logistics Center two major development plan. The property is located on the northwest corner of John's Road and State Road four four, four fifty-one, approximately twenty-six point four acres in size. Aerial shows industrial complex on the east, residential uses on the north, west and south. The major development plan proposes an industrial warehouse center that includes two buildings. The buildings total two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and seventeen square feet in area and are proposed to be single story with a maximum height of forty-five feet. While seventy-nine parking spaces are required for both buildings, two hundred and seventy-one parking spaces are proposed. In addition to the building setback of a hundred and thirty-one feet, there's an existing opaque fence as well as proposal of southern magnolias, winged elms, oaks and high-rise live oak trees adjacent to Lakeside Residential subdivision. The applicant meets the open space requirement with the proposal of a mulched trail along the top of Bond One, the easternmost portion of the project area, which connects to the pedestrian walkway at the front of the site. Site is designed in accordance with the requirements and intent of the Land Development Code. Two entrances are proposed with right turn lanes to serve the project from John's Road and on the south side of the project. Architectural elevation meet the city's development design guidelines for industrial uses. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the North Star Logistics Center two major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
All right, any questions for Gene?
Have we heard from residents in the surrounding area at all?
As me.
Okay. Good, I'll be hearing from you in a second, thank you.
Any questions for Gene on that? Not public, come on up.
Thank you, men and commissioners, I I just spoke to the applicant, I just told him I would be opposing this because there was nothing said to us, there was no sign of public notice. I've been watching, I looked them up on the property appraisers, so I knew they purchased it and I knew what was coming because of who they are. But there was no, me, I am the vice president of HOA, so there have been no conversations or anything. So I would respectfully ask you all to table or deny or at least allow them to come to us with something. If you go back to the diagram, the three D vision, you will see, as you see it, it's to the, what is it, to the north, to the east, to the west, it's all around it right there. I'm on, oh, I'm sorry, Tim Ford, fourteen thirteen Waterview Ridge. So it's coming right in my back door. It's less than two hundred feet from the entrance of our community. And we know John's Road, I actually call us the warehouse district because that's all there on John's Road. But because it's on the other side of the overpass, it's got, now you're coming right in our back door. So um I have texted other residents to get online that they can see because we didn't know. It's just ironic that I showed up to council meeting rather than being online that I can't speak. And so I do thank God that I showed up.
So was there notices sent? I, you know, I know that there's a procedure where I think the applicant is is required to send notices.
There's no public hearing notices for uh major development plans. Um, some major development plans, as um decided by the community development director, would be required to have like a pre-application community meeting as as the community development director um decides on, determines rather, at review of the site plan. But there's not, I mean, this is entitled for industrial future land use and also is entitled for zoning district of IL, which is light industrial. The proposed use is consistent with what's permitted on there. They meet all the site design standards as well.
Can I respond to it? I understand and I hear that so much on YouTube and I like the way Gene does the job so well. It all sounds mechanically, it it meets the threshold, it meets this, but common sense have to come in. You in my back door, so even though it meet, and I'm not saying they shouldn't have it.
Right.
But they should have a sit down with us to say, how can we, how is this going to work? Is it a twenty-four hour facility that we here semi trucks all night, all day? Uh, matter of fact, as you know, uh, with Pam, I know all their names. It's a two lane road. We have a real bad traffic problem at Bradshaw and John's Road now. There's three hundred and one homes in our community, three hundred and one. And now with the with the the uh industrial that's already there and this massive piece of, uh, matter of fact, they're building on Okoye, Apopka, and I think they have an entrance out to John's Road. I'm not sure if they're going to use it, but now you want to add more to it. So yes, it might meet in all of the approvals from everybody else. And why would the community development director not request them to talk to us in our back door? Blows my mind.
So the community director would be?
Jim Hitt.
Jim Hitt. Do you have anything to add to that?
I honestly don't recall waiving the requirement for the uh, for this to be, uh, have have a public meeting for this because it is adjacent to the property owners.
I'm I'm sorry, Jim.
I do not recall waiving the requirement for the community meeting because it is adjacent to the subdivision.
Okay, so.
So.
So what you're saying is that there was no waiving of the community for the applicant to contact the community.
Correct, not that I recall, I mean, there's there's too many residential structures around there to.
Going from I to, you know, industrial to residential, you know, there's no, there's no buffer, you know, the commercial or office to. So I mean, I think unless the the applicant says it's been sent out, I guess we need to ask the applicant, did it get sent out? And if, but are we sure that you didn't?
I I don't recall waiving that requirement, so.
And maybe we'll have the applicant come up and answer my question.
Yeah, one of the things that, I mean, they could, they could still do that, obviously, um, I think they should. Um, but they, the the development does meet all the regulations like like uh Miss Sanchez mentioned. It does meet, I mean, and and a little bit more.
It, what, what else?
And a little bit more in regards to setback uh for the buildings themselves, so.
Okay.
So does applicant want, did, can the applicant respond, was was a public notice?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Sam Sabali, I'm with Florida Engineering Group. My address is fifty-one twenty-seven South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the owner. And uh, as relates to the community meeting, it is optional. And uh, a few things, and I'll come back to the community meeting in terms of, you know, what what we can do. But as far as the site, it is zoned industrial. It had an existing use on it which predates the single family residential development. Uh, what we are proposing is consistent with your city code. We meet all standards, we're not asking for a waiver. Um, and basically, the amount of development which we are proposing is also one-third of the maximum allowed on this site. So from that standpoint, we meet all the standards, we meet city code, it's zoned properly. We did a traffic study, uh, we are providing the turn lanes, so we've gone through extensive review with your staff. And we have done everything to mitigate the fact that we are adjacent to residential on the west and north side. So as far as not having the community meeting, we're willing to sit down and talk with the residential community. It wasn't a situation we're trying to bypass that.
Right.
We thought it was uh pretty straightforward from the standpoint, we meet all the criteria. There is an existing buffer and we're adding to it, so.
That's what they'd like to hear, I'm sure that's what they're looking for, is what does that buffer look like?
The owner is here, uh, he can address it a little more.
Well, just just one of them, yeah. So if we could just, I'd like to get a a public meeting with the the two, the two homeowner associations and let's kind of make sure both kind of know what this whole project will look like.
We want to be good neighbors and, you know, whatever we can do to, um, you know, if they have any concerns, we'd be willing to work with them on it.
Okay, so is Jim, as far as, or Gene, as far as this, is there another stop or we would need to do it here? And if we wanted to give the the homeowners a chance to take a look at?
I don't know what would be the.
You know, Jim, my question is, before it comes to us, it does go to planning and zoning. Am I correct in saying that? I mean, I see it here. Why isn't any of this discussed at planning and zoning?
Wasn't brought up.
I mean, it's this, yeah, when you said at planning and zoning. Yeah.
The community meeting is optional, Commissioner.
I I understand that, but there's a concern because it's industrial, it's it's right behind a residential. I mean, so it's our responsibility, we realize that this light industrial uh project is going to go behind a residential. So wouldn't it be, I guess, make sense for us to say it's optional? But because you're behind a residential community, it would be a courtesy to at least let them know and then you would get a feedback. But I find that at planning and zoning, this wasn't discussed, now it comes really to the last deciding board. And then all these obstacles and challenges come up and there's time invested by everyone.
I understand.
And so, you know, then you're asking us to vote on something that has all these, just has a real big gray area that's kind of leaving us in a position. You know, we're we're trying to make sure that the community is, at least understands this development and that they are at least for it. So I I don't know.
Uh, staff planners don't have the discretion to, I I don't have the discretion, because it's optional, right? However, the code does state that if the community director, community development director, determines that this should require a community meeting, then they would have one. In the process of this review, that determination's never been made. We've not been informed of any kind of public.
Well, you weren't because they were unaware of it.
Right.
The resident is saying that it was just by chance that he realized that it was coming before us today.
So silence, silence doesn't mean that you have to do a community meeting. It would have to be said, you have to do it, so silence means you're good to go, keep moving forward.
Correct, if it wasn't, if the applicant wasn't told that, hey, community development department has determined.
This is needed?
Yes.
Understood, okay.
I just want to clarify for the record that the planning commission meeting is publicly noticed and it, the the public has every opportunity to speak before. before the planning commission as much as they have to speak before here. So if we appear at planning commission, there's no opposition, there's no discussion, no concerns. And now we come here and at city council, it's the first time we have public concern. These aren't issues that were raised prior.
Okay, so I do, I do understand what you're saying. But I believe that the resident, I believe that at the planning and zoning, because there was no notice in that community, they had no idea that it was.
Well, I don't want to allude that that community wasn't notified of the planning commission meeting. It's the planning commission meeting and the item, if it's going before the planning commission is noticed, just as it's noticed, the public has the same notice that an item is going to come before the city council as it is going to come before the planning commission. If they don't appear, I'm not, I'm not faulting someone for not appearing if they might not have seen the notice. All I'm simply stating is that if the, if residents come and appear for the first time at city council, I mean, we have to give the opportunity to address it at that time. But that if the, some, if those issues weren't raised at planning commission and we move forward in the record before the planning commission is such, and now they're brought for the first time at city council, we'll address them at city council.
So my, where is the resident? I'm sorry, can you come back up?
And what's your name?
Tim Ford, Tim Ford.
What is it? I'm sorry.
T I M F O R D.
Okay. How did you discover or how did you learn of today's meeting? And did you know of the planning and zoning meeting? The one that is held before?
All right. So what I do know, I look at the planning and zoning online too. Normally, when there's a proposal coming, like at another piece of property that I have off of Michael Glenn, I got a letter that said, this will come up before planning and zoning. And you look for your yellow sign that they normally put out there on the property. There has not been any of that. None of that has been there because the property is at the entrance of our subdivision. I knew because of the same owner that's doing the other project across the street, that eventually it was coming. Now, I thought it was two or three years down the line. But I knew it was coming, so I paid special attention to it. How did I know to show up here today? I didn't. I just happened to say, hey, I'm off today. Let me go see what drama's at the city council meeting today. Then when I look, I see 735 and 815 Johns Road. With my smart self, I Google. I Google. Oh, this is the property that I've been, I didn't even know. So I take a picture and text it to other residents. Now, I will say this, so we won't have a fight in this. Something needs to be done. I wish the present structure would just burn down because it's horrible. I don't know if y'all been down there to see it. So I'm not, I'm not saying something shouldn't be done, but I think we should have known what's coming, what we will be expecting in this industrial area that's coming. The average home out there is over $500,000, the smallest one. And to sit there coming at your entrance with a big warehouse coming, not, and talk about the construction and everything else, the roadway. And then we just say, well, we did the study and it meets all the criteria. I get that, I get that, I get that. You know, 441 meets the criteria for McDonald's, but you just can't put them anywhere, you know? So I just think there should be a conversation with the developer and the community to make sure we're on the same page. We may not agree, but at least we can say we had a conversation and we lost or we won.
So you were actually paying attention to one property and realized that when they had both properties, that it involved the property you didn't know about.
Well, unfortunately, I can't go to every city public meeting, whether it's the planning commission or the council meeting, and just sit there and say, well, let me see if this address is going to come up. But I look for what comes, that there's a display of a public notice, an announcement that's coming. I don't read the popka chief anymore. No disrespect, Mr. Rickerson, but, you know, to know. I just look for that yellow sign. And it has not been placed. Or I look for a letter from the planning and zoning department that this item will come up on such and such a date before planning and zoning. And we did not get it. And I think we, we've established that that was not done.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Couple of things real quick. The public notification signs are when there's a land use or a rezoning done, not for all the different developments that we have throughout the city. We've got a thousand different developments going on. I talked to Mr. Sabaly and we are going to recommend tabling this to the first meeting in April, which will give enough time to do a notification to the neighboring residents and the HOAs. And then that way they can see what the plan is and what it looks like.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. All right, look for a motion to table this meeting to.
Wait.
Sure, okay.
And just to let everybody know too, this was a former, the horrible structures there, former agriculture related, right, nurseries. There's a fair amount of pollution on the property. So we bought it knowing we'd have to deal with it. It's because there's no other residential user can really buy it and mitigate it properly. And so we've gone through a lot of efforts with FDP.
Which I think will be good, I mean, share that with the homeowners.
For what it's worth, we're, we spend a lot of time.
We appreciate, yeah, absolutely.
Todd Watson, 111 Lake Bouldona Drive.
And just kind of, kind of weighing just a tad on all of those homes, I don't know, was it about 20? 20 homes on the eastern, eastern 24? You've got a road, I know you're meeting buffer requirements, but you've got a road right behind it, you've got parking spots right behind it. To Mr. Ford's point, we don't know the hours of operations yet. You could have cars coming in and out there 24/7 and you've got lights coming in, you know? That, that's got to be a top of mind. I'm assuming that's going to be a discussion during your community meeting. So that will be top of mind for me as well.
Sure. I mean, there's, there's trucks coming in and out of that operation already now. So we're going to, we're going to add, we'll even show you how much traffic we're adding.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, look for a motion to table, to what was the date?
April. April, I think it's April 1st, the same thing, first Wednesday.
Maybe April 5th.
April 5th, okay. Make a motion, a motion to approve tabling this agenda item until April 5th? Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Alascaz. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Wingspan ABC Kelly Park.
Gene Sanchez with the community development department. This is a request to approve the Wingspan ABC Kelly Park major development plan. And just to let you know, the meeting agenda, the development project is listed as a 46 unit multifamily. But the correct number of units is actually 368 multifamily units and 42,500 square feet of non-residential square footage. Apologies for that. The property is located on the northwest corner of Kelly Park Road in Plymouth Rento, approximately 21.36 acres in size. The master plan for this development was approved on September 21st, 2022 as a companion to rezoning ordinance number 2936. As mentioned, the major development plan proposes a total of 368 multifamily units encompassing 156 one bedroom units, 162 two bedroom units and 44 three bedroom units, approximately 18 dwelling units per acre. The commercial development consists of 45,200 square feet for restaurants, retail and office uses with a proposed total floor area ratio of .75. Full access with right and left turn lanes is proposed on Kelly Park Road. And at the time, Kelly Park Road is widened to four lanes. The full access may be closed off by a median resulting in a right and right out only or right and right out left turn in access connection to the site. Cross connections to the west and north are also provided. The amenity open space program comprises of 2.74 acres that includes covered pavilion, pocket parks with benches, plazas, pool with deck and lounge areas, green and passive spaces and a playground. Project site is embellished with red maples, southern magnolias, live oaks, Japanese blueberries and holly trees. Shown are the applicant's proposed architectural renderings. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February 14th, 2023. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the Wingspan ABC Kelly Park major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Gene? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Once again, Albert McKeeby, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Once again, it looks like we're trying to introduce another 1,000 people into the area. That's probably another 500 schoolchildren. Address the point earlier today. Commissioners, look at this seriously. You don't have any plans for any schools in the area. How can you continue to accept these developments? What are you going to do with our children? Where are they going to go? I'm in a loss for why we don't have a moratorium. Or at least at this point, we don't have the economic development director at any news of when that's going to be in place. Because this is ludicrous.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia. I have the same thing for this, I have for virtually all of them. Infrastructure and what all it entails. It's more than just plumbing. It's roadways, it's schools. It's an understaffed and underperforming fire department under the current leadership. It's an understaffed police department that puts the burden on Chief McKinley and Chief Miller. We're adding people, not, not by the carload, by the busload. And we've made no plans to accommodate infrastructure totally. Sewage, water, resources, roadways, education for the kids. You're big on education. Every time we come here, you want to beat us up with a special project about something to do with education. But how is that working out for kids that are sitting 45 in a portable classroom? It's time to reel it in.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane and Popka. With the length of the meeting, I'm not going to beat you up every, with every new development. But again, the three questions. How is the city and how the citizens going to, going to benefit by this development? To the school again, talking about the aspect of schools. We know the problem is Tallahassee and we're going to have to put a nail in the coffin on these issues. Tallahassee won't approve Orange County for schools until they can fill the building, which explains why the Wolf Lake campus for 16 years had kids in portables. Portables are more expensive to operate, they're not as safe for the kids. And anytime there's a weather event, they have to buddy up with a real building, the, the brick and mortar buildings in order to do it. And again, do we have the roads? Do we have the sewer and infrastructure to support it? Further, with the aspect of the discussion just a while ago with regard to the aspect of letting neighbors know, I think that certainly we ought to amend the code so within a certain number of miles for any development, you notify the HOA or the people so they can come up and not have to be surprised. I know these items are published, but how many people take the time to look at it? And you can say, well, no, it's on them. I think it's on us, thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions, Mr. Becker?
Not questions, I mean, I want to, because I, I respect the opinions of the people that, that speak during this public comments. I just want to address a couple of them because, again, I commented the last time we, we looked at this section. It's all part of the Kelly Park interchange. First and foremost, and anything that I say, if staff, please correct me if I say anything incorrectly. But in terms of school capacity, we're not doing any land use. The land uses as such were, all of those reservations should be on Orange County for them to consider what the future land use would have been here in terms of max density and so forth. So this would be not net new changes versus what they would be expecting right now currently. Is that correct?
That's correct. The school capacity was entitled for this project at future land use and zoning.
Okay.
But they will go through school concurrency agreement just like in the consent agenda items today, yes.
Correct. And so, again, it's probably time for us to go back down to OCPS and work with our school board partner, Melissa Byrd. And I know that she would probably be amenable to that and it's incumbent upon us to do that. Though, the other piece, the economic development front, I think even before, I remember when I was first running, like six years ago, the whole talk about, there was excitement around the Kelly Park interchange and development within that area because it can almost be a new kind of center of interest. And so, and again, this is a, it's a slippery slope in terms of development. But I think absent of a current economic developer right now that we've, we have posted for, something that you can do to promote economic development is the idea that we are growing in a responsible manner and doing that on something like this because economic development is development itself in a responsible way, right? You always have to caveat that. Obviously, we just sat in here on February 7th and talked through the pioneering transportation agreement that would impact Kelly Park Road specifically. I'm not sure if it was Plymouth Rento as well, but Kelly Park for sure. But, you know, there, there are concerns here. It's not, I'm not dismissing the concerns, but this is an area of our city that, with this mixed use product, commercial opportunity and stuff like that, it's, it's something that residents that I've spoken with are, are desiring. So I just want to, I don't really have any questions for you, absent you correcting anywhere where I'm wrong. But, and I don't know when we're going to see the pioneering agreement brought back to us, but obviously all this stuff works in concert with each other, so.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, and thank you Commissioner Becker for pointing out those items. You know, really, the city adopted over a long period of time a vision for what they wanted to see at the Kelly Park interchange and adopted the overlay. And this really is a positive project because it's about implementation of that. And it's, and it's both rooftops, residential, residents that are going to support the commercial, the retail, the restaurants. And I think when we first started this, it was talking about 15,000 square feet of, of retail and restaurants. And, and that ended up about tripling through the process. This, this, as I said, it's consistent with the city's comp plan, with your zoning, with your Kelly Park interchange overlay. And then the, we've worked with city staff who are the subject matter experts regarding compliance with, with all of these items. We do comply with the, the land use code. We did previously through this process have a community meeting where, where notices were, were sent out. And then we did have the, the unanimous recommendation of approval from the DRC and from your planning and zoning commission. And we, we are going, we, we were vested for schools, but we had a concurrency management agreement that was approved by the Orange County Public Schools on January 24th. And it does result in this project paying about $2.8 million in just capital, school impact fees with that. And so with that, we've, this really is, the city laid out a vision and this applicant came in and said, okay, we're going to implement completely in compliance with your vision, no waivers, no variances. And so this really is the start of that sort of economic growth that is viable and sustainable in the location where the city really wants to see it. We, we have our engineer and our team here to answer any questions.
And, and density is below what your max could have been as well, correct? I mean, if your multifamily density, it was right around 18, I think in this area. It's 25 max.
That is correct.
And then too, I mean, this is more a staff conversation because obviously Mr. New and Mr. McKimmy touched on it and Mr. Olson as well. But we're starting budget season now and all of these different incremental needs from a fleet and people and all that costs. Hopefully it's loud and clear to that staff because, you know, our, us to be able to make positive decisions like this or approve these pieces of businesses is really steeped on the idea that you all are properly budgeting for that, that growth. And so I'm assuming that that's happening and we're starting a budget workshop now, or budgets this month. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Do you know or have any prospective tenants already lined up for the commercial spaces?
Thank you, Commissioner. My client indicates that there has been a ton of interest in this site and that there are a few LOIs, letters of intent that are, that are going around right now. And so they look forward to announcing some of that publicly pretty soon.
We look forward to hearing it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Any other questions for applicant or for staff? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Mayor, I thought we already.
I think we've already done it, I'm sorry.
We already had public comment on this.
What's that?
We already had public comment.
Yeah, we've already had public comment, yes. We've already had public comment.
All right, are we done?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Just you standing right there, we've got another one coming your way, probably. Okay, all right. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the master development plan for Wingspan ABC Kelly Park.
Still moved?
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I got to take a two-minute break.
Okay.
Thanks.
Meeting back to order? All right. Ms. Jean, Jean, come on down. This is the 730 Monroe Avenue.
Yes.
Thank you.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the Oaks at Monroe major development plan. The property is located north of State Road 436 and south of Monroe Avenue, approximately 5.74 acres in size. The aerial shows residential uses on the north and commercial uses on the east, south, and proposed commercial on the west. The Oaks at Monroe major development plan comprises of A6 multifamily units within the MUD mixed-use downtown zoning district. The project consists of three apartment buildings in which each unit has a minimum living area of 750 square feet. The proposed building height is 41.3 feet. A total of 128 parking spaces are required, and the applicant is proposing 140 spaces, including eight accessible spaces. The major development plan shows a walkway leading to the sidewalk along 436. The applicant is required to preserve 10% of the project area for open space or amenity, and they're proposing 17%, approximately one acre. The amenity program includes a clubhouse, pool, and a dog park. The State Road 436 frontage is embellished with hollies and preserved oak trees, live oaks, and southern magnolias are placed along the western and eastern boundaries. Live oaks line the front of the Monroe Avenue frontage. This project will have a single access to the roadway network on Monroe Avenue. A secondary emergency access will also be provided on Monroe via stabilized surface and locked gate. The project also has cross connectivity to the west near the southwest corner of the project. Based on the city's Land Development Code, Section 5.16, 5B3D2, there shall be a rebuttal presumption that a left-turn lane shall be required for all residential and non-residential developments unless waived by the city council. Therefore, at construction site plan review, the project will be required to include a left-turn ranked lane on Monroe Avenue at the site entrance. The proposed architectural elevations meet the standards of the city's development design guidelines. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February 14, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Oaks at Monroe major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
All right. Any questions for Jean?
Yeah, is the only off-site improvements you're doing is that left turn lane? Is that the only one that we're requiring?
Yes, sir.
We're not concerned about traffic at Christiana and Monroe, that intersection? We are concerned?
We are apparently concerned.
We're a little concerned about it. There's just nothing we can do about it right now until that property comes in. When we, whenever they come in and develop, we will make that a proper four-way stop intersection.
Which is the property that's towards the south of that intersection?
We tried to get this development to make a connection on the northern part of their property, so that once those properties come in and develop, their entrance can be modified so everything moves to the west and comes out where we have the traffic control, but they couldn't make that work. So as a result of not being able to have an access on 436, they are, they have one entrance for all their traffic, hence the need for the left turn lane. I will tell you, because I know it's going to come up, that the trends that I'm seeing right now, as for Main Street becomes more and more congested, that people are diverting off to go on Monroe. I didn't know I was going to be talking about this today. But I did, as far as what's going down Sixth Street, that's where people are going. They're going Monroe and Sixth Street to avoid the gridlock. And traffic on Sixth Street since 2020, the daily count has tripled, and the PM peak hour has more than doubled. So I'm assuming that it's same on Monroe. We get complaints about traffic on Monroe, and you can't look just at the number of turns that are entering and exiting this project. You have to look more holistically and think about safety, and that left turn lane will provide another layer of safety, since there's not a whole lot else we can do. Monroe is Monroe. It's going to be a two-lane road.
What is, do we have anything planned for that site to the west yet?
No. And we, the city, tried to talk to them on behalf of this development. We all gave it a go, and the applicant tried to talk to them, and they are, they have an idea about their property. It's zone commercial. They've been paying commercial taxes for.
The 10 years that they've owned the property?
10 years or something. And so they want to do something there that's spectacular so they can recoup their losses. But I think they don't know what that is, and they're not prepared to do it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Pam or Jean?
Left turn lane will only be from which direction?
The left turn lane will be for traffic heading west, turning left into the site. Coming up from Sheeler, they'll go around, get on Monroe, turn left into the site.
And once the four-way stop is implemented, is it going to line up with Christiana?
Yeah, when the next development comes in.
Any other questions for Pam or Jean? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Maybe it's just me, Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia, or maybe I'm going senile, but this was originally part of the downtown city center plan. No, it's across the highway, so it's not? Okay, because we still really haven't accomplished anything with that. We're going to drop another apartment complex in right across the highway. They've already given up part of it for low-income apartments next to the Faircloth property, and the downtown city thing that was planned and talked about that the city lost millions of dollars on with political connections and crooked bankers. What do we got for it? We got a hotel, we got a roundabout to nowhere where the homeless people congregate, and now we're going to drop in another apartment complex on the people over on Monroe. Have you driven down Monroe lately? Traffic is horrendous, and we're going to drop another apartment complex on them. Every time we turn around, we're dropping in more apartment complexes, more people. Same argument goes back to schools, roadway, and infrastructure.
Anybody else?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. As you know, I'm not going to let the schools go. Orange County is the fastest-growing county in the state. We, by being one of the fastest-growing cities in the county, enjoy a larger proportion of trailers than anywhere else. We have the fourth-largest school district in the state, and you have to add the three top school districts together to match the number of trailers Orange County enjoys. In 18 years, only one time, Orange County Public Schools said no, because as long as they can put a trailer on the property, they're going to approve new development because of pressure from Tallahassee. 18 years, and that was Hammerka Estates, and this, not this board, but the board at that time, overrode it and still approved Hammerka Estates. We've got to put a cork in the bottle. Going to Orange County, we have to go to Orange County Public Schools to team with us to go to Tallahassee, because it's Tallahassee that's the cork in the bottle with new schools. We ought to be operating like Advent Health. When they opened that hospital, they had some empty beds. We need to do more of that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello. Again, for the record, Ken Fisher, 1614 White Dove Drive, Winter Springs, Florida. I am here on behalf of the applicant for the property, and we also have the attorney here, and we have our traffic engineer. We agree with staff, with the exception of the left turn lane. As you see, the plan that we have presented before you, there is no turn lane shown. That is because we are just now hearing about this requirement. We have a traffic study that does not warrant a left turn lane. I believe there's maybe a peak of 13 left turns into the property. Furthermore, there is a lift station at the corner. Am I got a pointer? There. Too bad if you could see my finger. Can you point? Yeah, the lift station. Yeah, that's two things at the same time for me. We, yeah, right there. We have a lift station right on the corner where Jim is pointing, a City of Popka-owned lift station right there. If we do a left turn lane, we've got tapers, and these tapers are going to extend beyond our property in places that we don't have control of. We wouldn't be able to dedicate right away, and we have no way of moving that lift station. So between this being a last-minute thing to us and the traffic study not agreeing that one is warranted since the peak left turn lane is 13, we have no physical way of getting a turn lane in here, both to the left and to the right. We'll have to taper from trying to widen Monroe. I think once you widen Monroe, it's going to be more of a safety issue, because now people are going to be able to go even faster. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. My traffic, our traffic engineer is also here, and as is our attorney.
So there's something that you just said, that you said you had no idea that we were asking for a left turn lane?
That is correct. That is why it is not shown on the plan.
Pam, when was, when did y'all recommend that? I know it's not been the last week.
The rebuttable presumption has been in our land code since before I started working here. You know, I, it's not my responsibility to tell every developer to read our land development code and do what they're supposed to. I spent most of my time working with this applicant, working on the access that they wanted on State Road 436. You know, I'm sorry, they feel like they just are knowing about this, but it's the code. I don't have the authority to change it. The code says that you do. You can tell them they don't have to put a left turn lane in there. And I understand they might have some issues, but we can do a modified left turn lane. It doesn't have to be the full thing, just something to get people out of the flow of traffic so they can safely make a left turn. I can't tell them they don't have to put a turn lane in there, and whatever issues they have, these are great engineers, they can figure it out.
And it's the same as the Southwick property, right?
It's the same as the Southwick property.
Okay.
I want to just mention one more thing. There's only one property between us and Winn-Dixie, and Winn-Dixie has an entrance onto Monroe, also no turn lane.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here. My name is Vasu Prasad with Premier Traffic Group, based in Winter Garden. So we did a traffic, a traffic turn lane warrant analysis for the turn lanes. So based on everything, all the warrants that we typically use, a turn lane is not warranted, a left turn lane because of the 13 vehicles in our, so that's roughly one every six minutes, which is a pretty low-volume situation. My concern here, just as a traffic engineer and doing this for 18 years, would be that if you put a turn lane here, that may hurt the effectiveness and the safety of putting a turn lane at the T-intersection when the property to the south develops. So ideally, if. So ideally, if, it's my opinion as a traffic engineer, that if you have to put a turn lane on this roadway, it most likely have to go at the intersection because of the higher volumes of traffic there. So for that reason, I think, looking at everything, given that a turn lane is not warranted by the different codes and requirements, and the low volume on here, even though traffic, as Ms. Richmond said, traffic is increasing and so forth, it is a low-volume left turn. And the overall safety in the corridor could be impacted by having turn lanes that aren't being used properly. You can have situations where people use turn lanes as bypasses, that creates a potential conflict and so forth. So there is more to consider than just, you know, application of this covenant in the code. There is also the overall aspect of the numbers and, and the warrant. So typically, a warrant would say a turn lane is not warranted because simply, it is based upon some of these safety criteria and so forth. So that's my two cents in the matter. If you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant on the road?
Why are we so incongruent on this? I mean, why, why is there a surprise here? Staff is not aligned with the applicant, applicant's not aligned with staff. So why, why is that?
It really shouldn't be a surprise. They were told, certainly they knew about it at planning commission.
Well, I mean, in all fairness to the applicant, I mean, the, there is no presence of, on their, on their plans, existence of a left turn lane. So I don't know how it gets...
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor? I'm Scott Baker, Zimmerman Kaiser-Sutcliffe Law Firm, 315 East Robinson Street, Orlando. Here on behalf of the applicant, I want to maybe try and approach this from a different angle briefly, and that is that, assuming we did know about this requirement, it is in the code, can't deny that, the code says there's a rebuttable presumption. I think the only evidence, the only competent substantial evidence in your file today is from our traffic engineer that clearly rebuts that presumption. So we're asking you to let us proceed with the plan that is in front of you, that we've provided the professional evidence to show that it's, it's not a safety issue, that it's not warranted, and there's no other evidence in your file today or any testimony you've heard that rebuts our position. So I would appreciate your support of the plan as presented. We've met every other code you've, you have in your book, and we think we're ideal use for this site. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or?
We don't have a copy of that traffic study, correct? Do we have it in? Well, I don't have it. And it's not in our packets either.
So that wouldn't, so to your point, I mean, if we don't have the, the testimony in front of us, I mean, I can't take verbal, "yeah, it is" as testimony. On the other hand, what he, what the applicant just quoted, does staff have their own testimony to dispute the claim made? Because again, we're in a quasi-judicial matter. We're going to have to face our, our decision here based off of the testimony here within this business.
I can tell you that those traffic volumes have grown, and I'm going to give you exact numbers from Southwood Commons. And, and, and it's applicable here too, and I can get you the numbers that show you how much traffic's grown on Monroe. And this is since 2020 to 2023 traffic counts that were taken earlier this year. On Sixth Street, in 2020, the daily count was 787 trips on the segment between Alabama and 441. In 2023, that number has grown to 2,560. And I expect that we would see similar volumes on, or similar increase on Monroe. Because people, they are avoiding the gridlock on 441. We're trying to work with DOT to get something done about that, but that's just the reality. We have a beautiful grid system in the city, and people are opting to use it. And asking for a left turn lane to help make that access to that site, they are required by law to have, provide safe and adequate access to their site. And the left turn lane provides another layer of safety to get people into that site. We've heard from people that live off of Christiana, what they think about the traffic out there. And this is just one, one thing that can be done to make that a little bit safer.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Sure.
Thank you. With all due respect to your staff, the traffic counts, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so, but I can tell you, simple traffic count volumes are not the type of analysis that goes into whether a turn lane is required. That would be what our engineers report us for, and I'm happy to have him testify at, right now, and I think we, he just did testify, that no left turn lane is needed here. So if we want to make this more formal, which I think we're entitled to do, I think he can read this entire report into the record at this moment, he can summarize it, he can answer questions, but I would, I would ask the commission to consider...
We don't have that. We can't just read it just while we're sitting here. So if you want to, we'll just table this, this motion, and we'll bring it back the next council meeting.
If, if I may interject with this, I, I think the argument of the left turn lane might be here premature, because our, the staff's comments, this is an approval of the major development plan.
Right.
The staff's comments are that the left turn lane would be addressed at construction plan review.
Okay.
And at that point, now we've got a rebuttable standard. Now, at that point, I think it might be the proper time to then have the presentation, and if they're seeking a technical deviation from the code, it'll be addressed at that time and then presented forward. I think we may be putting the cart before the horse here.
Okay.
The major development plan can go forward, it still has to go through the construction plan review. And at that point, that's the, that's where, staff's comments, actually, that's where that issue would be addressed. We're acknowledging the rebuttable presumption, and then that, that would be the proper time and proper venue to discuss that issue without having to table this and proceed forward. Not, we're not going to make that determination today when it's a review that's done at construction plan review.
Okay, so it would come back to us, we got one more?
It's got to come back for construction plan review.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's when the appropriate time to address the issue.
Okay.
And the applicant's going to get the same, it'll be done then.
If I may. So, and, and thank you for the opinion. So we're not slated to come back here again, and so it's really hard for, we've already looked at this, and a traffic, a turn lane and a widening doesn't fit. So to look at that and to come back a second time for a redesign that we've already looked at that doesn't fit, that's, we've got, we've got hindrances to do a left turn lane. You know, we would have to redesign to do a right-of-way dedication in order to accommodate a left turn lane. That's a different issue, but the problem is, is once we do the proper tapers for a left turn lane, which the tapers will go back to the left and to the right, we're going to encroach onto property that's not controlled by us. And there's a lift station in the way that would stop, would, would prohibit us from being able to do a right, a widening in that area. So I think that, with all due respect, I, you, your staff has our traffic study. It may not be in your report, but this was something that was required. We are required to do a traffic study. I'm not sure the benefit of requiring us to do a traffic study if a traffic study is not going to be followed. But we've got a traffic study, staff has the traffic study, it was done on submittal number one, maybe even before that, but we would like the traffic study that staff has reviewed to be followed. And then just to say that we, I'm not really sure how physically we're going to get a turn lane into such a small area with the, with the hindrances we have in place.
Michael?
I'm deferring to Pam, that's, that's a technical matter. I'm just saying that the venue, the venue for this is that construction...
Those words is coming back to us.
It would come back to you in, in similar fashion to the agenda item that's actually coming in later, which is the, the technical deviation. If the matter cannot be resolved at construction site plan review, the applicant has the ability to come before you, it's equivalent of a variance for that technical review. So I think if, if the issue cannot be resolved at construction site plan review, the proper venue is for it to be presented to you as a technical, as a request for technical deviation.
Okay.
And if I may, the key, the key thing here, while turn lanes are always good and, and they're good for safety and so forth, the key thing here is if, if you put a turn lane here, it might preclude the distance and the space and the safety to put a turn lane where you really need it, which is to serve the roadway intersection, which has a lot more volumes there. And of course, when the, the parcel to the west develops, and this property has a connection stubout to connect to that, to that property. So that's, that's, that's one of the key differences perhaps here, as compared to other developments you may have heard about today.
Pam?
I wasn't prepared to discuss this today, simply because I instructed the applicant, if they didn't want to put the left turn lane in, to ask staff to put an agenda item on your agenda in the future, so that you can make your decision. I think you can go forward with approving the project, and we'll, since they're not coming back to council for their site plan, they can come back and ask you to waive the requirement for the left turn lane. And I might have more information for you at that time.
Right.
To, for you to consider.
We'll have the traffic study.
And, and now that Commissioner Nesta knows how to conduct and review a traffic study, I, I will share the traffic study with all of y'all, and I will show you the updated traffic counts.
Okay.
And, and at that time, I think it would be appropriate for y'all to make a decision about the turn lane, separate from approving the, the major development plan.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Okay.
And just to give a little context, I met with Pam Monday for like 90 minutes, and she walked me through a traffic study, how it's done and all that, so I learned quite a bit.
All right. Any thoughts? Motion? I'd like to do.
Well, I mean, do we have to motion it any differently, or if we motion it as business is, they would have to come back with that deviation?
Well, you're going to, you're going to, business as is, that the issue of the turn lane is, is properly reviewed at construction site plan review, and if they can't resolve it there, then there'll be a separate item asking you to allow the deviation and basically resolve the dispute at construction site plan review. So you can proceed forward with the motion as is and approve the major site, and approve the major site plan, or major development plan, sorry.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the major development plan for the Oaks at Monroe?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries down this slate.
And just, on that, on that piece, right, again, this, this type of housing, I think it checks a couple boxes in terms of importance. You know, Commissioner Smith, I know that you've been high on affordable type of housing. This is an affordable type of product, but then, I don't know if y'all saw the announcement earlier this week, the Propagate Social House Group is opening halls on Fifth, and having something like this where it can be walkable and frequent and patronize those, those establishments, I think is a value add. So hopefully, it's not a situation where people are automatically having to jump in a car, and, and maybe this is, fuels, to Mr. News' point, where this, the, the city center is, maybe it fuels a little bit more interest in that area to bring in those walkable elements to, and fill those properties, so. But let's work out the transportation issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I have two items for you this evening. Both are professional services agreements, and just to kind of give a little extra insight into these professional service agreements, we traditionally have two ways that groups or users come to our facility. One of those is through a rental process, paying a rental fee, running a program through the rental fee. This other path is a professional service agreement. What we've tried to do in the department is standardize this process so that at every group that comes to us, looking to, to partner with us in a program, basically plays by the same rules. These are revenue-sharing agreements at the 80/20 split, so we're not outlaying any budgeted funds for those programs. We're simply partnering in an area that we see benefit to grow our recreational programming or enrichment programming by utilizing some facilities that we have space and, and time available for. So the first one I have for you tonight is the agreement with the Florida Economic Consortium, Butterfly Effect Program. This program provides mentorship opportunities for teenage girls. Some of those areas include confidence building, leadership skills, career development, age-appropriate activities, one-on-one, and group mentoring opportunities as well. In addition, they do bring in entrepreneurs throughout the community to speak with the young ladies and give them insight in operating, starting, launching businesses. So we saw this as an opportunity when we met with staff, as staff with them, to bring this partnership to the Billy Dean Community Center as an enrichment opportunity. We have the date and time available for the program. It fits into our current staffing plan, so we saw it as a, as an opportunity to build some enrichment into the community and, and provide another offering at the Billy Dean Center.
Any questions for Radley?
Do they have like an exclusive right in any capacity, or if we want another program like this partnering with us?
Right. So part of the, there is no exclusive right on these professional service agreements, and we also have them as short-term agreements. So if you'll notice, this agreement expires at the end of this year. Prior to the expiration, we would come back to you if the program was successful or, or trending upward, we'd come back for a renewal for another year. So the plan on these is to keep them in those one-year terms so that we're constantly assessing how the program's growing.
Okay. And then I read briefly that there was kind of already, the program's already in place using our facilities?
Yeah, so sometimes with these programs, either start as a rental-based program, or in this case, it was an opportunity that we wanted to kind of see if the program had merits. So they, they did start a little early. They have about five participants that come, and they do offer this program throughout Orange County at some other facilities, and their average is about 20 for the, for the program. And so it fits nicely in the Billy Dean Community Center.
Sure. And that's the expectation participant-wise here?
I mean, we love, the building can hold 50 at a time, so we'd love to push it to, to as, as high as we can.
Okay.
So, but we, we saw it as a great opportunity to, to build some enrichment.
Have they, will they be kind of marketing it with the local, I guess if this is, what's the age group on this?
It's teenage, teenage girls.
So we have our middle school and, and high school, will we be marketing their, this program so that they're, they realize it's at the Billy Dean Center?
I, I believe the group will be doing all that outreach. We will also, as part of the partnership, we'd like to push this, to grow it, so we will also be conducting some outreach to make sure that information's...
For me, it's anything that can help young women, to encourage them and help them get ready as an adult. I mean, I, I do support that, I just want to see the program grow, but that we actually go out and target some of our local schools, especially the, the middle school.
I will make sure to follow up with the group, and we will get that on the agenda.
Any other questions, comments for Radley?
I, I think between this one and the next piece of business, my only thing is, again, some people have said you get too administrative in my approach to this position, so taking a step back, it's more about building the guardrails of what you do as the Parks and Recs Director to say, if programs like this, or the sports one that's coming up, things like that, if it's, you treat it all the same. I mean, it's all, does it provide a value add for the city? You know, obviously, in this case, there's no expenditure, expense from our, from our budget going to either one of these things. So is the rev share agreement consistent and, you know, equitably carried out? Is there a finite time period of these things to make sure that if it's a failing program or something that we don't want, that we're able to assess that on a recurring basis and so on and so forth? That, you know, I think maybe we don't see every single one of these that comes, more so you create some sort of policy around enrichment programs, or sports programs, or things like that, and then we agree on the policy, and then it's just, that's part of your job responsibility.
Yeah, and if, and I'll definitely take the direction the council would like to give on that. The main reason for this type of agreement is exactly that, to set a standard policy and a standard procedure for these to happen. The group could ultimately want to stay a rental, a rental group with us, and that's totally fine. These groups have different business models, they have different plans, they have different goals they're trying to achieve. These type of agreements help us maybe with a smaller program that we see value in, that we can help try and build, but there's times where they might switch to a rental-style agreement. And the wish of the council for how we present these, if, if it's, if it's the direction that you want to establish a policy, present the policy, and then have that standard established, I'm totally fine with that. I'm totally fine with that, and that actually would help guide my staff through these as well.
For, I just have one last question. The, the Florida Economic Consortium, are you able to speak to anything else that they do, or what, just a unique name for the, the program itself, I guess?
I do see Mr. Rod Love is here. They, they offer programming such as this to the community. This is one of the programs. I don't know too much of the other programs that they offer, but this is the one that's been presented to us and we saw value in, in their, in their program.
Yeah, if you can give me a little more detail, please.
And, and, and thank you, Mr. Rod Love, because I, we did discuss, we, I did speak with him, and I did ask him if he can come, because when we had the agenda review yesterday, and I realized that you would be presenting for him, I, I felt it was best for him to talk about his program. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, appreciate being here today. Rod Love, President, Florida Economic Consortium, also a resident of the City of Apopka. The Florida, excuse me, the Florida Economic Consortium is presently in six counties in the state of Florida. We, our concentrated area right now is predominantly over in the city of Orlando, Ivy Lane, Mercy Drive, Rosemont. The services that the consortium provides is actually capacity building for faith and community-based organizations. We provide direct services, but our focus is building capacity for organizations. And Commissioner Becker, you just mentioned this earlier, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up. What the Florida Consortium does, it eliminates that administrative portion for small and faith-based organizations, so they can get in there and actually do the work. From a technology perspective, one of the things that this commission will be seeing as a result of that program utilizing your facility, and I don't know if you received this in, in the past, but we'll be able to tell you how much we're doing and how well we're doing it, but at the end of the day, we're gonna be looking at, is anybody better off after we provide those services? And so we're gonna be able to quantify what it is that we do, and we're rolling out what's called GBAs. We all grew up in a time that, you know, everybody was focused on GPAs, grade point average. Well, these kids and families are living in communities that are a great deal more challenging. These communities are, unfortunately, a lot of them have experienced some neglect. So what GBAs are, we've partnered with Dr. Randy Nelson, who's a criminal scientist. He's well-renowned around the country. He goes into communities, work with law enforcement and community stakeholders. GBO, GBAs are something very simple, and that is, you can't get a great GPA if your grade, behavior and attendance is not what it needs to be. And so we're gonna be working with communities, agenda-specific, and we're also rolling out a campaign for fathers, responsible fathers. A training that provides a stipend for responsible fathers, encouraging them to work with their children three days out of the week from a tutoring perspective, reading, writing and math. And we're watching and we're tabulating, and there's a technology that we utilize so that we can track this, and it's doing more than just providing tutoring and educational kids for their, I mean, services for their kids. It's actually developing some linkages that we may have lost along the way. So Florida Economic Consortium, I appreciate what the city has done with allowing us in the facility. My staff has said, Mr. Williams has, he and his staff have worked tremendously well with them, and I just want to say to you as a governing board, thank you.
Awesome. And one last question, too, for, because it's specifically focused on female teen. Who in the community, I guess, have you guys partnered with to kind of, I guess, lead it? Is there like one figurehead of that, or?
Well, we have contracted with the Butterfly Effect. The Butterfly Effect, we also have that contract over in the Ivy Lane community where we're approximately providing services to approximately 25 to 30 young ladies. So we're trying to continue to do some things in Apopka, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. I think it was approximately four, four and a half years ago, when, within the city of Apopka, we experienced a rash of murders in the period of about seven or eight days. The mayor at the time was Orange County Commissioner, and he asked that the community convene a task force. Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Velasquez, you, I believe you two participated on the task force as well, and Commissioner Smith, I know you were engaged and involved. A lot of the recommendations from the task force, and I have copies for you today, a lot of those recommendations that came from the community who sat on the task force as well. We're implementing those recommendations, which also is inclusive of mental health services, behavioral health services, parent training. So we're trying to put our best foot forward.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia, just as a concerned citizen, I, I have some, some questions about both of these. In the past, these kind of contracts have been awarded to political operatives, people that are friends with connections. It's cost us money. The Fields of Fame is in disrepair, as was stated earlier, the, they're not in that good a condition, so we're talking about super soccer stars. What's it gonna do for the maintenance of the field? Who, who are their instructional staff, and what kind of liability is the city accepting by allowing them to use facilities? And, and I mean, it, it sounds, it sounds good, but are we protecting our city from liability? You know, you, you read the news all the time about things that happen and interactions between facilitators and students, and now you're talking about teenage girls. Are there women that are gonna be facilitators, or are they all men? It, 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 it's a simple question, and we need to protect the city from liability, not only from a program like that, but what about the wear and tear on the soccer fields? We're gonna lease it out, the city keeps paying to fix things, and if I go out there with my grandkids, I can't play on a soccer field because I don't have a reservation, or because the baseball team contract has it tied up. And there were a lot of issues with that before. Those aren't the kind of issues this city doesn't need.
I appreciate your concern to the city officials. FEC is insured. We've also turned over our insurance policy and named the city of Apopka in our certificate. In addition to that, everybody that works with kids are background screened. We're doing what we need to do, but I'd be remiss if I did not say this. Last week, if you're not up in arms today, you should be. When a 19-year-old pulls out a gun, shoots five people, one happened to be a nine-year-old At some point, we need to be able to work together. Thank you for bringing up those, those questions, but yes, everybody that works with those children are background screened. To reduce the liability for the city of Apopka, my insurance policy is covering us. We gotta figure out how to work together.
Yeah, you come on.
Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. I'm glad we're having this discussion, because if you guys can remember, one of the things I want to do is end poverty. Bring love and prosperity to all our poverty-stricken communities. So that's where my heart at. If you can go and replay some of my public comment, you would understand that. Now I want to speak to this because here's what happened. Every time we have a mass shooting, we come up and we make all these wonderful suggestions, but we keep having the same problems in our communities. When you look at the round table, it's the same faces. We preach to the choir. The only thing, the only reason our community is not changing, our approach is wrong. Now I'm gonna give you a little history with myself and how far I go back on this. Five, 10, 15, I retired out of the Navy in 2003. We had shootings in South Apopka. I came out, I was on the news, this gotta stop. That's in 2003, and we're having the same problems today. If we keep doing the same thing over and over, what's gonna change? Nothing is gonna change. I was at, myself, when I was part of South Apopka Safe Neighborhood with Rogers Beckett here, Sheriff Demmons at the time. I went to the 20-year, 25 years of fighting crime in the black community. Five years later, I went to 30 years of fighting crime in the black community, and we had the same issue. So how long are we gonna keep having this same approach? Now, in this program, how much money are we putting towards the program? And I noticed that Mr. Love said, five years ago, I remember that, five years ago, we had a program here for South Apopka, task force. What is the success rate? What did it change because we're still having the same problem five years ago? And we all know the solution, so what are we doing? We're pimping the process. And who's suffering? Our kids are suffering. I want the same thing you want. If we all want that, we all in agreement, why is it so hard to make change in our community? Why does nothing ever change in our community? You would think, I just came from Savannah, Georgia for Black History Month, and it's, it's a shame how we look at things. Two people looking at the same thing and come up with a completely different environment. When I go around South Apopka, I am sad for my brothers and sisters, that we allow ourself and we allow them to live that way. And I don't have a lot of conversation with Mr. Love, because, Mayor, when you was the Commissioner, and we had all these town hall meetings at the George Bridges Center, I said, "Mr. Love, we can change what's going on in the black community ourself. We don't need government to change that." I still feel that way, Mr. Love, because when I look at South Apopka, the only thing we need is for the government to treat South Apopka like it treating North Apopka. Then it's on this community and the citizen or that resident to pull themselves up, but you can't tell us to pull ourselves up by a boot strap and we don't have any boots or we don't have any straps. We can't do that. So yeah, this is a very touching situation to me, because every time I look around, five, 10, 15, 20 years, we're still having kids shooting themselves down in our community, and we're still going around with the same dog and pony show, when we all know the solution.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
And this, this is not the solution. Mayor, how much money are we gonna put into this program? And then when other people come in, are they gonna have the same resources to have access to this type of program?
Appreciate it. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to all of our councilwomen and men. My name is Hesakaya Bradford. I want to address an issue that we've had forever, and I think an issue that we have had forever is where we begin to point fingers without moving in the right direction. I think in, 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 in this, in this package, which we presented to Orange County, we presented it to the state of Florida, we presented it also to the city of Apopka. So within this book, there are some guidelines or some things that we wanted to see happen. And we haven't got the funding necessary to get some of the things off the ground that we want to do. One of the things that is in this book is touring to young girls, so this is not a new idea, like I, you know, and I'm in, in, in full agreement with, with what Mr. Love said, and also with what Sylvester said as well. But I do think that there are times that when we look at tutoring and how are we gonna do it, 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 it goes back to the heart of human feelings. How do you feel about the young peoples in your community? Do you see a need to do something different in our community? And I think that that's where we need to start right now. As a resident of Apopka for almost 70 years, I've seen the good, the bad and the ugly, the ups and the downs. And so I think that as a whole, if we can just come to the table and, Mr. Love, can you give all of them one of these books, please? And, and inside of this, you will see guidelines that we sat down and we came up with that we really want to do for our community. So it's not something that we're just doing this year, all the way back to, I, I believe in maybe 2016, 2017. So there are things that we wanted to do, even before I heard Sylvester talk from the standpoint of safe neighborhood, before he or Roger Beckett was a part of that, Pastor King and myself was either the president and vice president. So I, as I moved on, I passed that on to Roger, who is doing an unbelievable job. Some of the same things that, that Roger is asking for, we was asking for. Some of the same things that they're participating in, we participated in. I, I probably participated in almost the first fighting crime in the black neighborhoods, and it's still there. It's not just in Apopka, it's everywhere. So we, we're not looking at just one area. I think as a whole, we, we could be the example of how cities should be when it comes to fighting crime, when it comes to changing the face of blighted community. I, I, I believe, you know, we was talking about it on, on several occasions, CRA dollars can be spent a lot different than they've been spent. We can look at it, sit down and come up with it, but if we, if you all would just study that book, that book has directions to help us as a community to move from where we are to where we need to go. But again, we do need, I, I, I believe we need government. We give y'all a lot of money from, for, as taxpayers, I think we need some of those taxpayer dollars back in our community. So I ain't gonna say we don't need y'all, I need y'all. Y'all get my money, I want some of it back, and I want to see it utilized in our community correctly. So I'm not gonna fight against y'all from that perspective, but please take a look at this book and look at what we can do as a whole to make our community a better place to live, work and serve. And I believe we can all do it better together than we can do it apart. My segue is always saying that individuals gonna win games, but teams gonna win team championships. So I think we need to come together as a team and win some championships for, for, for our community. Thank you.
No. Okay, anybody else? No, 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 you're, we're, no.
Okay, Radley, if you'll close this out? Thank you.
All right, just looking for the pleasure of the
We're not. We're done. Sylvester, we're done. It's Radley, it's, no, we're done. We're done.
We have new journeys. We have other ones that save the community. How much money are you gonna give to them? Good question. How much do they can invest in the community, how much money you can give to them? She's been here all over asking for money, but she can't be able to get it, but they come here, they can get money.
This, yeah, can you, can you clarify? Yeah, this contract does not call for any payments to this group. This is a revenue-sharing professional services agreement. Again, we saw this as a program that had benefit.
And clarify rev share. They're rev sharing with us.
With us, correct. Revenue share with us. So any program fees, now this is a program that is gonna offer quite a bit of support to registrants, but a cost rev share in these professional services agreements is an 80% programmer, 20% city. The city does not outlay any money directly from the fund. We have the overall determination on whether a facility can or can't be used, what schedule it's used on, so that we build a, a program that, that, and utilize the facility to the ma, the, the maximum. So this is one of those we saw as an opportunity to provide some enrichment for the Billy Dean Community Center. The time and space is available, and the program looks like something that could be of value to the community. So that's why we brought it here today.
And this is until December 31st of this year?
Correct. So these contracts, these professional service agreements, they will only be one-year agreements. This will be shorter because it's in the current year. So we would come back if this program is performing well and, and a, a great asset and a great asset to the community center. We'd come back in December at a meeting to renew for another one-year term.
Mr. Love, if I can, sorry, if I can just ask one more question. For, I guess, what's the... Because it's a profit share, so looking at it business-wise, what is like... What are you charging students, I guess? And is there opportunities for scholarships and things like that? Do you guys offer that? I guess, what is that... Where's the funding come from, I guess?
We don't receive any... I wanna clarify that too, and thank you. We don't receive any funding from the city. The funding that we received is through competitive bid processes. And the kids, the families, don't pay a single dime.
So explain that again to me. So we're through competitive bid, who's bidding, I guess?
From Orange County. Orange County. So we don't receive any money from the city. And the family and the kids don't pay any fees or services.
Okay, so it's coming from Orange County?
Correct.
The students get to enjoy it?
Absolutely.
And then we get a... We have a profit share from there?
When you say profit share, that implies somebody's...
Right, a cost share, maybe?
Rev share.
Rev share, thank you. That, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. Looking for a motion to...
Again, I take this back. We're getting into the weeds on this, probably unnecessarily. There's other programs that you already have professional contracts with in the city existing under the same kind of general parameters as we're talking about here.
Same contract. Yep.
You have your requirements, your insurance requirements, your...
Background checks. It's all written into the contract.
From a liability perspective, we're covered.
It's been reviewed by the city attorney.
Right.
By risk.
And it's the same structure. Time horizon either, it's not...
No, and again, the intent is to not lock into a long-term arrangement because we wanna make sure the program makes sense and get a yearly check.
Correct. Okay. Commissioner Velasquez, good?
No. I actually, just because it is for young women, I'm in support of it.
Okay. Looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a recreational professional services agreement with the Florida Economic Consortium to provide youth and teen mentoring and tutoring classes at the Billy Dean Center and other Apopka Park and rec facilities.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Radley.
Okay, the second professional service agreement in front of you is for the Super Soccer Stars Orlando program. Again, this is the same structure as the one we just went through. It is a revenue share with eighty percent to the programmer, twenty percent to the city. Again, this, the city controls and retains full control of the schedule, approval, and placement of these programs. So this program will not impact any of our current renters. I know there's been mention about field conditions out on the fields. We are working, I've worked with my staff prior to this holiday season. We have developed a 2023 updated maintenance plan and rest period plan for the complex. They're also in the current process of doing some amendments because we have experienced a little extra wear on our south side pads because we had a larger-than-expected youth flag football program, which, great to have the participation, does put a little extra wear on our field. So we are doing some amendments to the field to boost that. And again, this is a program that we see... It's very, this, in this instance, is very refined down to the young kids. So it's one-year-old to two-year-old. The program does offer scholarships to those in need of anywhere between twenty to forty percent. And this program also, I'll cut over, does operate, they call it the Shining Soccer Stars Program. It's a program that teaches soccer skills to developmentally-challenged children in a structured program specifically to achieve some success for them. So again, we're similar structure, exactly same structure as the last agreement. Same requirements, insurance, background checks.
Any questions for Radley on this one?
You said it was twenty to forty percent for scholarships, right?
Correct. And they do that on a case-by-case based on need.
Sure. And then do we know what their cost is for students?
It says that, I think.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Thank you.
Pull that up here.
A hundred and twenty per eight weeks and fifteen dollars per class. And thirty dollars registration fee includes soccer jersey.
Correct. So they'll get a jersey and that's what they'll wear through it if they don't need to pay that thirty-dollar fee again until they need a new jersey.
Okay. Thank you.
And this contract is also until the end of December.
It expires in December. And again, we're trying to standardize the process and make these one-year terms that expire at the same time so we can do a review internally with staff, see where we're at, and then present to you all in a better process.
I know that, you know, our resident, Mr. Rod Olson, has spoken numerous times and he's about the condition of the turfs. And, you know, I have a concern with that. You're kind of assuring him that that's gonna be taken care of. And being that these are very young, young kids, I can't imagine them, you know, tearing up.
This is a low-impact, this will be a low-impact program. And yeah, turf is a living being. So there's gonna be times where we're going through wear patterns or insects or mole crickets, things like that. We have a professional staff and a park superintendent that's top-notch. He also reaches out to industry leaders to contact. They visit our site frequently. Anything from UF to Bayer, Syngenta, Site One, all the main companies that handle athletic turf and Bermuda grass specifically. So we bring them out on a regular basis to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to either recover a field or maintain the field in a safe, appropriate manner.
Okay, come on down, Rod.
Who's that? Oh, Rod.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. I'm glad to hear the scholarship program, but I did not have a chance to look at the agreement. I wanna make sure it's in the written agreement they offer the scholarship. Because as you know, we scholarship kids that are doing the rec program and the non-for-profit club also scholarships. And I think that this should be at least on par with it. I agree with the aspect, if you're talking about one of the three-year-olds, you're not gonna have the wear and tear on fields that we have. But I like to also point out again that the field conditions, they used to be like golf greens. It's not even like the fairway now. Most of our fields are like the rough. And we have to change what we're doing. In the past, and I understand several years ago, they reseeded every winter with ryegrass. And they closed the fields down for a period of time to do it. Now we close it down for a week or two, sometimes a month. And then we don't monitor it to make sure people don't play on it. So we've gotta tighten it up. But again, if the contract indicates the fact that they're providing scholarships and to what level that'll match what's doing with our program, I have no problem with it. Again, I spent my time finishing the Gannon Report and I did not have a chance to review the new contract. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? If not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve...
Is it in the contract?
So just to clarify, that is not written in the contract in any of the contracts that we've brought forth to you. If it's the wish of the board, we can look to add those to these contracts. But it is a short-term agreement. We can also proceed forward. And if it becomes an issue in this term, we can come back to them.
But you said that they're already amenable to doing that?
They are amenable, yeah. So we could add an addendum to the contract or...
Yeah.
Yeah. And this would be something that if it's, again, we can... I can prepare a policy on these agreements. And if that's something that we can discuss during that time, the wish of the council to add that as a section of the agreement, we can definitely go that route. This gentleman would not have an issue. I can't imagine adding that as an addendum to the agreement to move forward.
So how should the motion be? Is that quantifiable, the scholarship?
Would that be a motion to add language?
I'm afraid to add that to the agreement because we haven't necessarily negotiated. It'd kind of be a one-term deal. I think it's best to approve the agreement if you want to direct staff to negotiate such a scholarship. And when the parties come to an agreement, it'll be brought back as an addendum for your approval. I don't wanna add a term to the contract unilaterally without having it presented and discussed and properly negotiated.
This doesn't start till March, so we... No.
Now, they are...
They're just saying that it starts today.
They are a renter too, so this is one of those that we're trying to transition. So, I mean, I can speak with the gentleman. We can get that negotiated and at the next council meeting, bring back for the final...
Because if they don't operate in good faith and it's something that's already amenable to anyways, December 31st, we're gonna probably have the opposite feeling about.
Well, we can terminate this with a 30-day notice at any point.
Right, there's termination in there too. So, I mean, again, we were, we felt comfortable with the response we got back. And obviously, we can do due diligence and check on that throughout the term. But if that's where you'd like to go with it, we can certainly, I can certainly sit with the programmer and get that added and brought back next meeting.
We all comfortable? So I'd look for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a recreational professional services agreement with LTL Athletics LLC, DBA Super Soccer Stars Orlando to provide youth soccer lessons and programming.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Next up, Pam.
This is the left-turn lane I was prepared to discuss. It's the left-turn lane for Southwood Commons. Per city code, as we already discussed, there is a rebuttal presumption that left-turn lanes are required at the entrances to all developments. If an applicant or developer does not want to install a left-turn lane, council has the authority to waive the requirement if they ask. The developer of Southwood Commons has requested council to consider a waiver of the project. Staff believes the left-turn requirement should be enforced. Southwood Commons is located on the southeast corner of East Sixth Street and Alabama Avenue. This apartment complex will have 370 bedrooms in 195 apartments with 349 parking spaces. The project will generate 1,326 daily trips and 104 PM peak hour trips.
How come I don't do it? Do we have that here?
No.
What you have there?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're putting it, but we don't have it here.
We don't have it in our packets, this is what?
No, you don't have the presentation in your packet. You just had my staff report.
Okay.
And you're probably not familiar with this site because this is not something that's coming to council. The applicant's traffic engineer and maybe the applicant's attorney are gonna come up here and tell you that using industry standards, the number of PM peak hour trips don't, it doesn't warrant the left-turn lane. That's true if we're only looking at those traffic numbers. But what I know is that as Main Street has become more and more congested, drivers are opting to avoid driving through downtown. And they're using East Sixth Street and Monroe as a bypass. And I gave you these numbers before, but I'm gonna give them to you again. The traffic volume has been creeping up. In 2020, the daily traffic on East Sixth Street was 787 trips. And the PM peak hour trip was 110 trips. In 2023, the daily volume has increased to 2,560 daily, or daily trips and 287 PM peak hour trips. At some point, this is gonna cause an issue. The site entrance and McGee. And having the left-turn lane installed now will help mitigate those traffic issues. This applicant, this is a site, again, the applicant site plan. This is a little bit of a close-up. And again, you haven't seen it because the... Because of the Taurus Agreement that was signed, I think in 2016, the developments within the city center don't come to council. But this is, this is how their entrance is gonna be set up. They're gonna have a roundabout. And what I wanna, oh, this is the southern end. Again, one entrance. This is, what you're looking at here is a... It's called turns. It's a software that shows how large vehicles can traverse the site and the site access. And they chose to use a 45.7-foot-long fire truck, which is incorrect. It's about two feet short of what they're required to use. And if you look here... Maybe, maybe here. You can see that it's gonna be extremely hard for large vehicles, fire trucks, sanitation trucks, to get in and out of the site. And I did talk to my colleague in the fire department, and their preference is to have a left-turn lane. So when they're trying to get in and out of that site, and probably if I'd talked to sanitation, they would say the same thing. So they have a lane, kind of like a center lane to swing into. It's a little tight there. And it's... Oh, here it is, a little larger for you to see. You can see that using the incorrect size of the truck, they're already driving in places on that roundabout where you're not supposed to. They're required to provide safe and adequate access. The left-turn lane ensures that they'll have safe and adequate access. My job is to advise you as to what's best, what's in the best interest of the city. It is my firm opinion that a left-turn lane in the entrance to the site should be required. I listen when residents, they've done it today, have told you that they want infrastructure in place. Well, we're putting infrastructure in place. Having the turn lane out in preparation for what is probably coming in the future is a responsible approach. If it turns out I'm wrong, I could be wrong. Having the left-turn lane there isn't gonna create any kind of safety issue for traffic. So the request is to deny their request of a waiver and require, per the code, that the left-turn lane be installed.
Questions?
Just real quick, before we make public comment on this one, is this another quasi-judicial?
It is quasi-judicial because it's the equivalent of a variance.
So in that case, and depending on how you interpret... In your interpretation of the code, the way that that ends in terms of city council discretion, is that full discretion? Or is there any evidence that would compel us to make one decision versus the other? Or do we have...
What do you mean by full discretion? Just clarify.
Do we have the discretion to say yes or no? Because what I'm saying is that if we speak, clearly, things are recorded. And if we are in a quasi-judicial matter and we make a decision that's not based off of testimony that we can make our decision off of, I don't wanna jeopardize an outcome based off of what we're doing.
You're sitting in your quasi-judicial nature, you're the fact-finder. And the item that's presented is based on our code, there's that rebuttable presumption, which means the left-turn lane is presumed unless the applicant can rebut that presumption. Then what you're gonna be hearing is the evidence presented by the city, the evidence presented by the applicant. And at the end, your decision is, as long as you make your decision based on the evidence presented before you and your rationale and your analysis of that evidence, as long as your decision is based on competent substantial evidence, one way or another, you're fine. And that'll then carry forward in the event of any subsequent appeal that the city has to defend. That standard is that your decision has to be based on competent substantial evidence presented. I mean, you can hear the facts, you can analyze them. And if you can come to a, you know, reasonable conclusion based on the facts presented, that is your prerogative as the fact-finder.
Yeah, I just, I wanna caution all of us, right? Because there's been times in the past where we've talked about a tangent of things that aren't really, that we're able to use in terms of our interpretation of that fact-finding or rendering an ultimate decision on a topic.
Right, but you can use your rationale. I mean, if you're making a logical conclusion, hey, based on, I've had, this information's been presented. It's just, I don't usually wanna mix one case with another. It is cleaner just to base it on the evidence that's presented here before you today on the record.
Any other questions for Michael or for Pam? Okay. The applicant wanna come forward?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
As you can imagine, we have a little bit different of opinion from Pam's. I have a, um, wait, let me just do one thing really quick while we still have her presentation up. I wanted to point out exactly where the staff is requesting a left-hand turn lane. Sure you all are all very familiar with this. It is, uh, right here on Sixth Street. And the request is at the stop condition. So it's currently a three-way stop. Once we build our entrance, it'll be a four-way stop. They're asking that one leg of the four-way stop skew the road and have two places that you stop. So the person who has stopped turning left will then have someone to their right who has stopped going through. So I just want you all to imagine that. As you can see, you all actually went through and put in a nice new roadway through here, you put in on-street parking through here. That's already gonna have to get ripped out. You all also, um, acquired additional right-of-way, my understanding was to put a trail through. Well, you're gonna lose the ability to put the trail through because now we've got a left-hand, um, turn in that's taking up some of that right-of-way. And if we can just, um, switch to the PowerPoint. Oh, thank you. I have. So, we submitted, uh, back in August of 2022. I certainly hope that staff provided you all with our, that's it, provided you all with our signed and sealed traffic study?
Negative.
Okay, so, let's see what your, then let's start with what your code says. So we can all agree that your code states that however, there shall be a rebuttal presumption. I assume, counselor, that is, that is meant to be rebuttable presumption, that a left turn lane shall be required for all residential land, or all residential land and non-residential developments unless waived by city council. So, in essence, the way I read this, and, and I've never seen this in another city or county, they're basically saying, we're gonna require a left-hand turn lane regardless of what the facts are. Right? We're gonna require a left-hand turn lane. And, you know what? We're then gonna let city council insert their opinion above that of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, certified engineers, in our case, an engineer who signed and sealed his findings. And if you had this report that staff has had for over six months now, you would read on page 12, and I have this, uh, discussed at the bottom, "The installation of a dedicated left turn lane at the project driveway is not recommended due to minimal volumes and the all-way stop control at the intersection of Sixth Street and McGee Avenue." "As shown in Table 5, the westbound movement at the project driveway is expected to operate at a level of Service A, that's as good as you can get, and have a VC ratio of 0.20 during build-out, 2022, we were hoping would be our build-out, PM peak hour condition, indicating there's sufficient capacity with, um, with the shared lane." There, we, we also include in here the different volumes that would turn in there during the PM peak, which is 27. Again, since there is a stop condition, usually the reason you want a left-hand turn lane is so everybody gets out of your way and you can keep going forward. In this instance, because of the road volumes and you all not wanting this to be a cut-through street, you have a stop condition. And at that stop condition, if you want to make a left, you make a left. You still gotta stop even if you want to go through. So that was one of the reasons that we recommend, that our transportation engineer recommended that we not have the left turn lane. I do not agree with Pam that it just doesn't matter. You just build, you just build whatever infrastructure, wherever you build it, and it doesn't matter. It does matter. It does matter if, I mean, look, I, I just have driven for 30 years, I'm not a transportation engineer, but I've certainly come to a four-way stop where you, where you're alongside someone and car's coming one way, can't see around that, you're all sitting there, nobody can figure out who's supposed to go first and when. That's why it's a four-way stop, this really kinda makes it a, a five-way stop. And then one thing I want to point out, um, because I, I thought that there may be a question about, well, what does rebuttable presumption mean? And although I'm embarrassed to let you all know, I do have in my office, um, a copy of Black's Law Dictionary, whenever my law school degree doesn't pay off, and I looked it up. And rebuttable presumption is a species of legal presumption which holds good until evidence contrary to its, is introduced. It then shifts the burden. Well, we've introduced information contrary to the fact that there needs to be a left-hand turn lane. We have not received anything back from staff. This is the first time we've heard that they want a left-hand turn lane because they're worried about the maneuverability of a fire truck. If that's a problem, then we can tweak our site plan. Our MDP has not come before you yet until we figure this out. So if, if that's the problem, then yes. And casting no aspersions to a fire department, but I've worked with a lot of fire departments in May, and they want you guys just to build really wide roads everywhere to get things in and out of that, that's not the requirement. And so, I, I'm not sure that mixing the two is really appropriate at this time. And then I also wanted to point out something else, and that is, we are in the, um, as you all know, we're in, um, the city center, and there is a development agreement. And in that developer's agreement, paragraph 12, quite lengthy, but it talks about specific road improvements and who's gonna pay for those road improvements. This left-hand turn lane is not mentioned. But it says, "While developer shall have the responsibility of the foregoing, city shall be solely obligated to pay and/or reimburse all costs incurred by developer or associated with the roadway improvements specified herein and any other required off-site improvements." So the section, the section, the code section that we're being asked to build this under is titled "Off-Site and Near-Site Improvements." So I said to your staff, well, hey, I think you may want to tell your council that if you make us build this, we're gonna make them pay for it. And I was told, well, it's, it's not, it's, it's not an off-site, it's an onsite improvement. Well, which, which is it? You're requiring it under a section called "Off-Site." So then I looked and said, well, what is an onsite improvement? And your code says, "An onsite improvement is located within the boundaries of the specific parcel." This isn't in our boundary of our specific parcel, this is in your right-of-way. So what I would respectfully request is that this council agree that we have, um, had a transportation engineer sign and certify a, um, traffic impact analysis that does not support a left turn lane at our project entrance. And, um, hopefully that keeps us out of having to have the second discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Becky?
Uh, there, there's just a, a big difference between what you're presenting here, 27 trips in peak hour versus what staff had presented 287. Can anybody speak to the?
You want me to read, you know, it's really terrible that you don't have this because then you could understand. So the 27 is the 27 that would be left into this, that would be using the left-hand turn.
Okay.
So our traffic study divided it not just into PM peak, but it divided it into PM peak in, PM peak out, and for those PM peak ins, where they would be coming from the east, the west, or the north.
Okay. You guys go ahead.
Any other questions?
I was, I'll wait to hear from the rebuttal.
I will tell you first that our code says rebuttal presumption, whatever the term is, so there's not a typo in there. And I did not say that it didn't matter if there wasn't a left turn. I said, "It doesn't present any safety issues if we add a left turn." This is not considered an off-site, it's in a section of the land development code that addresses what the applicant needs to do. And this is, um, this is considered, um, not off-site, it's considered, um, a necessary improvement. The applicant is required to provide safe and adequate access to their site, which is why it's not an off-site or near-site improvement. It's considered part of the site. And I only brought in the part about the, um, the turns for the, um, fire department because it's, it's relevant information. It's not just about the traffic counts. When we talked about this before, I told you, you need to look a little bigger picture, look out to see what's going on. Think about all the comments we've gotten about needing to make sure we have infrastructure in place. I understand they don't want to do this, that, you know, they don't want to spend any more money than they have to. And if, if, if it's your decision that you don't think that we need a left turn lane there, and in five years, when there's something that needs to be done, it's all on us. The turn lane at least gives me something to work with. But if you say no, um, then, uh, what comes will come. There, there is a lot of traffic coming down the road. And, um, I've talked to traffic engineers too, their engineer's gonna, gonna tell you. He, he's not saying anything that's not true, but he's giving you his opinion. I'm giving you my opinion based on conversations I've had with traffic engineers that I have a, a high amount of respect for. And, and they concur with, with what I'm telling you. So in the end, it's, it's up to you to decide if you think. One other thing that I wanted to add, this is not a project killer, this is not something that's holding up their project. They have other things that they're still working through with my colleagues in community development. This is just another step in, in getting them to, um, development approval so that they can build, um, some lug-, luxury apartments on this location.
The, the, one thing that I have a concern is that we did build new sidewalks there and, and it's, they're gonna get ripped up in order to create this left lane. So who's, who's going to incur, who's going to?
Them.
Carry the expense?
Them, the, the burden is on them to provide safe and adequate access. And if that means they have to put in a left turn lane, then, um, then, then it's on them. It's just like every other development that comes in. They put in a left turn lane, if I could ask them to put in a right turn lane, I would ask them to, but, um, the code doesn't allow me because of the posted speed limit.
So I've got a couple sticking, or, I'm sorry. A couple sticking points, one of which, obviously, we just transitioned back to a slide. So it sounds like there's competing points of view of who would be responsible for the expenditure for the improvement. And then two, quite frankly, is if, if they did submit evidence, um, via the report, how come we didn't get it?
Why you didn't see this report?
The, the traffic report, that they would have used for rebuttal.
The report that they're talking about?
Yeah.
I, I suppose I just didn't think that it was, um, something that you, you really needed to see to have this conversation. It's not about, um, what the numbers are, this is more about safety. They didn't, they didn't pull in all the information, they're only giving you what they want you to see and what they want you to think.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm playing this one out a little bit because we just, we went through the scenario that's being discussed here, um, with Vic and Lester, right? We, for a long time, that was one of these scenarios where you have a through lane and a turn lane at a stop sign, a four-way stop. So if we install this left turn lane in on a, uh, on, on this project, how far east does it expand? And then going westbound, is there really any, any future plan to ex-, expand the road? Because I thought the whole point of Sixth Street would then be like road dieting and, and stuff like that where it becomes walkable and we wouldn't worry about necessarily car traffic, but prioritize foot traffic.
Yes, yes to what you said. But the reason that I, I think that the turn lane is important is because we do have that on-street parking and because traffic is, is gonna back up at certain times of day. And this will allow, um, residents to get into that turn lane and turn in a, a little more conveniently instead of staying stacked. When, when people stack like that, um, they start getting angry.
I, I know Becky wants to respond. Any other questions for Pam, then we'll bring Becky up to answer.
Well, have we decided who, who's going to pay?
Right, well, that's.
Well, it's, it's clear, this is not an off-site improvement, this is a, considered part of the development to provide.
No, I'm.
Michael.
You're hearing the evidence presented by staff.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Pam's technical expertise. And you're gonna hear the evidence presented by the applicant. You're gonna weigh the evidence, and you're gonna make your decision on what you believe, your decision is based, do you have the sufficient evidence to support your decision? I, I am not gonna tip my thumb on the scale one way or another. I'm telling you this, this is the parameters of your decision and how you make your decision.
So is it off-site or onsite?
I think it's fair, and you, you and I had this conversation weeks ago. I said, "I think your commission is gonna want to know that if they make us build this, are they paying $300,000 or $400,000 to build it?" And it clearly says, "Off-site" is something that the city pays. And I don't know how you get around your own definition, I know how you feel about it, but I don't know how you get around your own definitions as to what off-site and onsite are. I mean, we don't, we, we're not getting to, we're having to live with the DA.
Well, in my feeble mind, right, well, first off, is the juice worth the squeeze? And if, if it is, who's squeezing it? But if I'm, again, a layperson, reading this, off-site versus onsite, and I don't know, I don't know if we have definitions within our land development code.
This is them.
Okay, so you're pulling this directly from?
I'm pulling this right from your code.
On-site improvements located within boundaries of the specific parcel. So obviously, your parcel was sold off. Is that correct?
This, the request.
It's still part of the, it's still part of the developer's agreement.
It is.
But the parcel itself is owned and wholly by you.
The specific, the, the left-hand.
Parcel specific.
Sure. The left-hand turn lane is being requested to be built in the city's right-of-way, not in the specific parcel.
The point of contention here is onsite, off-site, for me, and I'm not talking right away or whatever. On-site improvements, I don't know if, how, and I don't want to speak for people, but onsite improvement, and I don't know if people are saying that it's within the original boundaries of the city center and the developer's agreement area.
That's not, that's not the way.
Right, and so, and then when you say parcel, it would be like a spine road or something that's within a parcel versus exterior to, um, a parcel, like right-of-way.
The, the way I read it is a specific, a parcel is owned by an entity.
If I may clarify.
And it does go, yeah.
If I can read the full onsite improvement definition in the code. "On-site improvements needed to ensure safe and adequate ingress and egress to the site, period. On-site improvements are road improvements located within the boundaries of a specific parcel proposed for development and road improvements which provide direct access, parentheses, turn lane, taper, signalization, right-of-way dedication, et cetera. They are the total responsibility of the developer and exclusive of the transportation impact fee."
I 100% agree that that is what it says, and this is not being built on our specific parcel. It is being built as this requirement listed in your code under off-site.
But it is a road improvement which includes the turn lane and that the road improvement.
Turn lane, off-site.
But it's included in the onsite, um, improvement definition of the, it's, we've got a development agreement with one language, we've got the code with another language, and it, and, yeah, it would be staff's presentation and supporting what, what Pam is stating that ba-, based on her interpret, her, um, interpretation of that section, she deems it to be an onsite improvement. The applicant is stating, and they've given their interpretation of off-site, it's then your decision to, it's, it's your decision to determine, is it onsite, is it off-site? I've given you the full, the full definition in this full context, and.
Well, and, and, and sorry to go back, but what I'd like us to do is not have to get there. We have given competent substantial evidence. Your staff did not come back and say that our report was incomplete, that it was incorrect. They did not ask our transportation, usually when we submit something like that, it's not unusual for staff to have comments. They send those comments in a letter, and then our transportation engineer addresses those, right? But, but that didn't happen, they took it. He signed and sealed it, that, that the turn lane is not needed. I respect that Pam knows this city, but to say. I respect that Pam knows this city, but to say, I'm going to completely disregard what this says, and this is the person who has to put their license on the line, Rick Baldocki is going to be the one that has to sign and seal those civil plans, and to just be able to say, you know, I just feel like the traffic's kind of heavy and we should have it, that, that is not evidence that is rebutting what we have put competent and substantial evidence by an expert into evidence. And I think Mr. Baldocki had something he wanted to say.
Thank you, Becky. Rick Baldocki with AVCON. I, I'm not the traffic engineer on this report, I'm the site engineer, engineer record for the site, and, you know, knowing that there are others that maybe knew this area better, we brought in Kimley Horn, because they had done the traffic study for the hotel and some of the other areas. So I, we went to the, the best source available for data in, in the area. And, you know, traffic, we'd like to think it's an exact science, but it's not, and it's okay for us to disagree as, as engineers, and we do so occasionally. My opinion of this situation, because of the configuration of the road with on-street parking, is that a four-way stop without turn lanes is actually safer than having this four-way stop with turn lanes. It's very confusing when you come up to a stop condition and there are turn lanes. If, if this did not have a stop sign, I, I would have a different opinion, because the whole idea of a turn lane sometimes is to get people to avoid rear-end collisions when somebody's trying to turn left. You get them out of the lane, and then they don't get rear-ended. Here, the stop condition is what we looked at, it's what you guys already have, we, Kimley Horn evaluated it, it works excellent. And I'm actually concerned adding these turn lanes, it will not function as well.
And just, just to address, what happens to the, what happens to the city right-of-way? I mean, it, it looks good now, what happens? We have to take out the on-street parking?
The on-street parking comes out, and then the sidewalk adjacent to the non-street parking, which is on the east, would have to come onto our parcel. And then on the, on the west side-
I can't see it here, can you show me that?
If we can go, can we go back to Pam's-
That would be, I'll, I'll take-
Sorry.
Well, while you're doing that, Michael, is there some cleanup we need to do in the language to make it a little more clear in the next, next time we-
Well, the development agreement is only as good as, as whether it could be supported by code and the language.
Well, that's what I mean, the code, right.
So I would differ that way. So, I mean, I-
I'm just concerned with who is going to incur that expenditure.
I, I understand.
It's not whether it's onsite or off-site, it's that if, if we decide one way or the other, and if we decide that we do need the left turn lane, then is, who's going to be paying for that?
Right, and the way, it's because it's, it's talking about off-site improvements in the development agreement, and I go back and, and, and look at, well, what is under, under our code, off-site is identified as, as one, but then, and then onsite is developed as other. And the onsite does, is not solely limited to any improvements within the four corners of the parcel, but also includes roadway improvements that provide direct access to that parcel. So it's, it extends the definition of onsite. So if I take, how, I, an interpretation can be made, and now it's, it's up to you to decide, you're a judge. I'm making a legal argument, I'm not saying you must follow my legal argument, I'm saying here's the argument for you to consider. Since the code defines onsite to also include roadway improvements that provide the direct access, then that would, that would then carry further, that would mean, well, that's onsite, it's not off-site as defined in the development agreement, and then that improvement would still be the responsibility of the developer, because it doesn't square with the definition of off-site in the development agreement. That, that's the argument to be made. And then for you to consider, is, is the argument valid? Is there enough evidence to support that argument, or is there more evidence to support their argument that states that it's an off-site improvement, that is the, that is the response, the financial responsibility of the city pursuant to the development agreement?
So, and, and she's right, I mean, there's a stop sign, there's a two-way stop sign.
Three.
It'll, it's three, it'll be-
And it'll be four.
There's three?
We're proposing it to be a four-way stop sign, once we put our driveway here. So just so you understand, so this lane would stay where it is going toward the west, this lane, which is currently the eastbound lane, would become the left turn lane. So this whole roadway would need to shift down another lane, so that the through lane would come right through these parking spaces, and we'd have to do the same thing over here to get the traffic safely over. This was the property line you see in magenta, but as part of our agreement, we donated this little piece here to the city, so you could bring a trail down this way and tie up into, to the north. So that right-of-way that we gave you for the trail, we would have to take it and use it for the through lane going eastbound. So it, it, there's some geometrical issues here that create hardship.
When was all of this streetscape built by the city?
Not that long ago.
Yeah. And when they built it, they knew that the apartments were going here, right?
I, I don't know.
Well, that's where the city center had-
Becky, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I think we can wrap this up pretty easily. Like, I'm willing to stipulate to the four ways, to the four-way stop without the turn signals. I'm conferring with staff, and it's just to determine whether there's an interest. We still have to present it to you, because you still have to approve the intersection without the turn lanes. We couldn't, this could not have been done at the staff level, because the code specifically states that any type of deviation has to come from the council. So, and, and at this point, in order to, to not prolong this, I'm willing to stipulate as to that, then there'll be no longer any issue as to the financial responsibilities for that, but I, I just need your improvement, your, your approval, because the code requires it as such.
So wait a minute, you're asking, or Pam, so you're acquiescing to the left turn lane? Are you acquiescing to-
What he's saying is, because we don't want to go down the road of who's paying for it, I know what the code says.
Right.
And, and I know that, that we're right, but I don't know that it's worth dragging the city through to argue over a turn lane. In five years, when there's an issue out there, you might think that we made a mistake.
Pam was smarter than we thought.
You know, when people are, every time they come to this meeting, and on numerous occasions scream for infrastructure, I'm going to present to you something that provides infrastructure.
I mean, I don't want an opportunity where it's, everyone's going to tell me move forward, it's a I told you so thing either. So I'm, I'm kind of frustrated at this point, after however long we just did this for 45 minutes, and staff now comes back and says, just kidding.
No, I'm not saying just kidding.
Just kidding.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, I think, if, if I had my way, they'd put a right turn lane and a left turn lane there, they would move that, the on-street parking, they would just have to use some of their, their property to make this fix. But because they're challenging that this is not an, and, this is not an onsite improvement, then I, I'm just not sure it's worth it to y'all to accommodate the turn lane.
Can, can we just bring it back to the board and make the decision? Because, I mean, staff is, you know, to Mayor's point, acquiescing to the applicant, and I don't see compelling evidence, nor do I see all of the evidence, so-
That's the biggest problem, we don't, that's like tonight's, or today, almost, tonight's biggest theme, is that we don't have enough information for half of these things that are presented to us. I'm really frustrated at that today, but that's okay. So do we need to have public comment or something now?
Can we just?
You can, you can, you can pull forward the motion, say, we've stipulated, it's almost what you said, is, is it worth the sque, is the squeeze worth the juice? At this point, I mean, this is, this is done all the time in, in courtrooms, if the two parties can see where things are going, and it can alleviate, is the best way to just come to an accord, we move forward and, and resolve the situation.
Anybody from the public wish, wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for some direction from the council?
Uh, where are we at? Uh, seven?
Seven.
Yes.
So moved that we not require the left turn lane.
Left turn lane on the Sixth Street at the entrance of Southwick Common Apartment. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? What are we?
Not, to not require.
Not, not.
Not, can you, I mean, can you read the whole thing?
No, the motion simply, the, the count, the council is going to waive the requirement that a left turn lane is needed.
Okay.
Which is what the code requires you to do, to, to actually approve a waiver that they've requested. So it's a four-way stop, no left turn lane.
Okay, so, because this has gone on for as long as it has, may we have a roll call vote? Because I don't want any surprises.
We've already, we've already voted, you're the one not, that's not voted.
Oh, was me? Oh, okay. So what do I have to say?
You say yes or no?
Oh, okay, perfect.
We have four ayes, you're the last vote.
Okay, I was the last one? You see, because I, you know, unfortunately, sometimes when it comes from the very end by Commissioner Nesta, I don't always hear everything. Okay, yay.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
I need a break.
Good, good, we're ready to go. Call it back into order. Next up, we've got public hearing ordinance resolution, ordinance number 2957. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. City engineer-
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Richard Earp, your city engineer. So this is item number eight on your agenda, the renewal of the Vista Landfill Class III landfill, landfill permit. It's a, the request is to authorize the city engineer renew the Class III landfill permit for the Vista Landfill, requested by Vista Landfill LLC. To give you some background, the renewal does not change any of the conditions that they've been operating under since 2017, it's just a continuation of their existing permit. The city does have a continuing consultant, CDM is an engineering firm, and they represent the city and review all the technical details related to the landfill. Brian Kinsley with CDM is here if you have questions for him, and then also the applicant is available this evening. But again, this is just a continuation of the existing landfill permit with no changes.
Okay, any questions for Richard or for the applicant?
I, I just want to kind of disclose that I did speak with Mr. Jose Bos, Baskin-
Yes.
-from Waste Management, and it was just, for me, it was more information, because I didn't understand what you were asking, so he sort of gave me, you know, a short, but very detailed education of what it was, the permit. And then I also verified that with Mr. Richard Earp yesterday at the agenda review for myself.
Any, anybody else have any questions about it? Okay. If not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the city engineer to renew the Class III landfill permit for the Vista Landfill as requested by Vista Landfill LLC.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2957.
Ordinance number 2957. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural and future land use in progress to industrial, for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429. Owned by Simpson D. Wayne, 50% interest, Simpson Suzie F., 50% interest, Laxey Ma, Laxey Land Investment, Sessions Plymouth LLC, and Hill Lisa LTR, comprising of 65.3 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes, Jean?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2957.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2958.
Ordinance number 2958. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T. Transitional and County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial, for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429, comprising 65.3 acres more or less, and owned by Simpson D. Wayne, 50% interest, Simpson Suzie F., 50% interest, Laxey Land Investment LLC, Sessions Plymouth LLC, and Hill Lisa LTR, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date. No changes?
No, sir.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2958.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2987.
Ordinance number 2987. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend- to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by Central Florida Expressway Authority, located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429, comprising 6.0 acres, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No, no changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2987.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2992.
Ordinance number 2992. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from M U E S G T, mixed-use east shore gateway sub-district to P D planned development district for certain real property generally located on the northeast corner of Acoi Apopka Road and Keene Road, comprising 28.2 acres, more or less, and owned by Shops at East Shore LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Jean?
There are no changes, Mayor. However, please note that we are asking for the motion to adopt ordinance number 2992 as well as approve the master plan, P D agreement, and major development plan.
Oh, okay, so it's all.
And so it's all in one motion?
Correct. And these were included in your packets under the first reading as well.
Okay. All right. So anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2992 and the master plan, P D agreement, master development plan.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2989.
Ordinance number 2989. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential low to residential high for certain real property generally located north of Old Dixie Highway and east of Shopkey Lester Road. Owned by the Husam Family Trust, comprising 10.42 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2989 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 15th or soon thereafter. This is to amend the future land use designation of 2021 Old Dixie Highway from residential low to residential high. The property is located north of Old Dixie and east of Shopkey Lester Road totaling approximately 1.4 acres. Area of the property shows residential uses in the vicinity and the north, south, east, and west. There are, if you look further down, there might be some commercial uses and designations on the south. The existing future land use designation for this property is residential low permitting a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use designation to residential high permitting 15 dwelling units per acre. The proposed future land use designation of residential high will allow the density increase needed to support the development of an age-restricted independent living facility on the subject property. Residential high future land use designation will serve as a transition between the commercial future land use to the south of the property and residential low future land use to the north. Apologies. If you just give me a minute. The applicant has applied for special exception to allow an independent facility in the R S F 1A zoning district, which was heard at the January 10th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. And it was tabled by the Planning Commission to give an opportunity for the applicant to address concerns during public comments regarding the proposed concept plan at the time. Comments included site design concerns, specifically building setbacks and buffers. At its meeting on February 14th, 2023, Planning Commission reopened that special exception public hearing item in which the applicant submitted the site plan shown here today. And they unanimously voted to grant the special exception use permit for the ILF use. Now, I mention that because at that same meeting, Planning Commission on January, on January 10th, Planning Commission voted a 6-0 vote unanimously recommending denial of the future land use amendment. However, they did, like I said, after that, in February 14th, because the site plan for the special exception was revised, they unanimously voted to grant that special exception. And I just wanted you to know that. So the recommended motion today is to accept the first reading of this ordinance, ordinance number 2989, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 15th, 2023. Staff is available for questions, and the applicant is as well. The applicant also has a presentation for you.
Okay.
Okay, so I just need to disclose that Ms. Tara Tedrow, representing the applicant, I did have a meeting with her. And it was very educational because I didn't understand why it was disapproved and approved. And it had to do with two separate.
Applications, right.
Applications. And then I, I needed the definition of assistant living as opposed to independent living, and why the specialist exception, and what if it didn't go through. So I will let her talk to that. But I just want to disclose that I did sit down with her for a meeting.
Ready?
Any, any questions for Jean? Okay. All right. Yes, come on up, Tara.
Good evening. Tara Tedrow, 215 North Aulah Drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant. Out of respect for everyone's desire to probably have dinner tonight, I won't do a lengthy PowerPoint presentation, which I had ready unless there are specific questions. I'm happy to answer them. I did have the opportunity to talk to most of you on the commission about this project specifically to explain the timing as to why we ultimately received a recommendation of unanimous approval for a special exception, which is companion to the future land use designation request before you tonight. We wouldn't be asking for one without the other. Under some contractual deadlines at the time, we thought we had to move forward with the future land use on the schedule that was supposed to have come before you all at your prior meetings. So we said, we have to take a recommendation. Please send us forward so we can at least fix the plan in the interim and come back for that special exception approval with the understanding that if the special exception were approved, the Planning Commission's decision would have been different on the future land use. Hindsight's 2020. We didn't realize we would get a contract extension. So here we are today where we did get that recommendation unanimously from your Planning Commission because the site plan, which Jean showed you, was revised significantly to show four times the amount of required. Let me get you to a new plan. Four times the amount of setbacks otherwise required under your code, so a minimum of 100 feet as opposed to 25. We have 30-foot landscaping buffers with canopy under story trees and shrubs. Zero landscaping buffers are required under code today. We also agreed to a 20-foot-high minimum bamboo wall to be planted by the time we are operational. So that provides a screening on the northeast and west side of our properties from all of the residents. We also reconfigured the site to change some of the buildings as well as some of the amenities specifically to respond to comments that the residents had made, which is why we ultimately received that special exception approval from the Planning Commission. So the future land use change before you tonight again is a companion request to allow that special exception to be approved ultimately. We're excited for it because this would be the only operational ILF in your city. ILFs have zero impacts on your schools. They tend to have a much lower impact on all of city infrastructure. I know there was a discussion with regards to transportation planning. And so we did have a traffic study run early on this that showed a very minimal amount. 28 a.m. peak hour, 36 p.m. peak hour trips. So these are low-traffic generators on the roads. There were some questions about what type of turn lanes we would be putting in. And we've committed that that is a discussion we, of course, will have during the construction plan and site plan phase with your staff as to what improvements at that time they believe to be warranted and what the conditions of the road would warrant. So we are happy to continue that conversation with Pam. Tonight is simply to be able to get us past a first reading so that the ILF would be able to be operational in the city. Happy to answer any questions you have. And I would ask for the opportunity to respond if anybody from the public did come.
Any questions for Tara?
I'm, yeah, not at this point.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2989 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Ordinance number 2990.
Ordinance number 2990. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential estate to very low-density suburban residential for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Road, West Kelly Park Road, east of Jason Dwelly Parkway, and west of Kenworth Drive. Owned by Rafael Enrique Alicia Casero, comprising of 10.129 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is to request the first reading of ordinance number 2990 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 15th or soon thereafter. This is to amend the future land use designation of 1450 and 1520 West Kelly Park Road from residential estates to very low-density suburban residential. The properties are located located south of Kelly Park Road and west of Kelly Park Hill subdivision totaling approximately 10 acres. Area of the property show residential uses and ag facilities in the vicinity. The existing future land use is residential estates permitting one dwelling unit per acre. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use to residential very low suburban permitting a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. The request is compatible with the requirement in Policy 3.5 of the Comprehensive Plan that properties north of Poncan Road and west of Rock Springs Road are restricted to no more than two dwelling units per acre. This application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone, which is the preceding item on the agenda from transitional to city RS F 1A zoning district. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February 14th, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of the ordinance number 2990 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for staff?
I just had a question. This was brought up during a DRC meeting when they were reviewing it that these type of developments, kind of, we'll call them smaller on these 10-acre parcels, they're going to start kind of creating lots of turn lanes, I guess, in a very small area.
Lots of, like cul-de-sacs.
Well, more so, I meant off of Kelly Park Road. It's going to be kind of messy. I guess my concern, and I don't know what the outcome of was that, from that conversation, but we're talking about a lot of turn lanes tonight. Will we have turn lanes? Like, what, what type of requirements are on that? Because obviously, there's no, there's not stop signs. It's a faster road as well. Sorry, we're getting a little turn lane fatigue tonight.
I know. That's all we're talking about. Yeah, they'll be required to do turn lanes. Ultimately, the road will be wired, wild, bleh, widened. Everybody's donating right away. The turn lanes that are already there will be repurposed when we widen. That part's not actually planned or funded for widening yet, but it will come.
Okay. And so do you have concern at all with some of these other parcels that'll be kind of their own separate?
Yeah, this, this is where the turn lane issue becomes a problem. When, when you don't have enough road frontage to build a turn lane, we can't really force somebody to go and buy property. So the left lanes are, left turn lanes are easier. It's the right turn lanes that become a problem. I can't make you buy property, and I can't make people sell property. So we work with what we have. Sometimes I call it a modified turn lane. It's, it's a taper that just gets people off the road so that they can safely make their maneuver. And then when the next development comes in, we, we fix it. Or they fix it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Pam or Jean? Not anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2990 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2991.
Ordinance number 2991. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to RS F 1A residential single-family estate zoning district for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road, east of Jason Dwelly Parkway, and west of Kenworth Drive. Owned by Rafael Enrique Alicia Casero, comprising 10.129 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2991 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 15th or soon thereafter. This is the companion ordinance of the preceding agenda item changing the zoning of 1450 and 1520 West Kelly Park Road from T transitional to RS F 1A residential single-family estate zoning district. The proposed RS F 1A zoning district is compatible with the future land use designation of residential very low suburban and with the residential development to the north, south, and west. DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to accept, I'm sorry, at its meeting on February 14th, 2023, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed change of zoning. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2991 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2991 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2994.
Ordinance number 2994. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Part III Land Development Code, Article II Administration, Section 2.4.1 Informational Meeting by amending Part III, Article II, Section 2.4.2, Pre-Application Community Meeting by amending Part III, Article II, Section 2.5.1 Discretionary Approvals by amending Part III, Article II, Section 2.5.4 Permits by amending Part III, Article II, Station, Section 2.5.5 Relief by amending Part III, Article III, Zoning Districts, Section 3.1.3 Organization of Zoning Districts by amending Part III, Article III, Zoning Districts, Section 3.3.6 Residential Two-Family District by amending Part III, Article III, Section 3.1, General Provisions by amending Part III, Article III, Section 3.3, Residential Base Zoning Districts by amending Part III, Article III, Section 3.6, M U D, Mixed Use District by amending Part III, Article IV, Use Regulations, Section 4.2 Standards Specific to Principal Uses by amending Part III, Article IV, Section 4.3, General Standards for All Accessory Uses and Structures by amending Part III, Article V, Development Standards, Section 5.1 Off-Street Parking, Bicycle Parking, and Loading Standards by amending Part III, Article V, Table 5.1.11.C.2, Bicycle Parking by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.3, Tree Protection Standards by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.4, Open Space Set Aside Standards by amending Part III, Article V, Table 5.5.5A, Fence and Wall Height by amending Part V, by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.13 Roads, Streets, Sidewalks, and Bike Ways by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.17, General Development Design and Improvement Provisions by amending Part III, Article X, Table 10.2.4B, Allowing, Allowable Encroachments Into Required Yards, Build to Zones by amending Part III, Article X, Section 10.4, Definitions by amending Part III, Appendix A. 10.4 Definitions by amending Part III Appendix A Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange MUKPI Form Base Code G District Size and Block Standards by amending Part III Appendix A Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange MUKPI Form Base Code H Density Intensity and Open Space Standards Table 4 Density Intensity and Open Space by amending Part III Appendix D Development Guidelines 5.6 Fences and Walls Providing for Codification Providing for Severability Providing for Conflicts and Providing for Ineffective Date.
Jim, Community Development Director. Sorry for the length. The last one you had was a little shorter, so I made up for it. I'm just kidding you. So this is the sixth set of amendments to the Land Development Code, as I mentioned to a couple of commissioners. The Land Development Code is not considered a static type of document. It is supposed to be more fluid. You make corrections, you make modifications, you update, you clarify different portions of the Land Development Code, and that's for the benefit of the property owners, it's for the benefit of the city itself, and it's for benefit of the developers. It's everybody that's involved that has to look at this document to regulate how development occurs, has to look at this. And the better you make it, the more clarification you have for the document itself, the better it is for the city as a whole. That's why one hadn't did a full rewrite because it hadn't been done. This is back in March, of course, of 2019, but that's the reason we did the whole rewrite because it hadn't been done in about 25, 30 years. And so we have a newer document, but again, there are things that need to be updated. So with that one, as I mentioned, this is the sixth batch in three years, so it's approximately two per year. Some are more lengthy than others. And as I also mentioned when we were, when I was going through this, the agenda review, sometimes I have two or three things after six, seven months. And then when I tell everybody, hey, I'm going to be doing these amendments, then all of a sudden, everybody comes up with these other changes to go with this. So that being said, this does affect 10 articles, or five of the 10 articles, and then Appendix A and Appendix D. Appendix A is, of course, the Kelly Park Interchange portion, and Appendix D is the definition section for the Land Development Code itself. The Planning Commission saw this on February 14. This is the first reading for ordinance 2994, and the second reading is scheduled right now for March 15th for the evening at 7:00 PM. It has been advertised twice. Actually, the next advertisement is coming this Friday, which will be for the 15th, basically. If you'd like, I can go through, you know, the summary for each of these, or if you want me to just hit the highlights.
Which is pleasure of the board, highlights.
Highlights.
And I'll tell you the truth, it's coming back for another reading.
Yeah.
So if I kind of.
I can, I can.
And then from now to then, I can really dig into these.
Sounds good.
And I'll have my little questions.
Okay.
Highlights.
One of the things that we noticed, and it was just about every document that cities have, has the approval process for land use map amendments and zoning map amendments. We had two different sections. So what I did, we actually combined them because it's basically the exact same process. And so we got rid of a whole section, we got rid of about five or six pages. So that helps because every time we add something, we try to even it off a little bit. One of the other things that we did, as you know, we've got quite a few more apartment complexes coming in, and we didn't have a clear way to require or what to require for mail kiosks. So we were getting kind of a hodgepodge of kiosks. They didn't necessarily, they were painted maybe the same colors, the buildings, but there was no overhang to provide for the mail carriers to put in the mail into the kiosks and people picking the mail up. We're standing in the rain. So we're requiring a comparable type of design for the kiosks to make it look comparable to what the facilities actually are, and also a cover and paved concrete behind and in front. So the behind part is where the mail carriers insert the mail. They don't open each box. They open up a big panel and then they insert it. And then the front also has a cover over it and it's paved. So that's probably one of the, one of the, one of the good changes that we came up with. And Jean Sanchez worked on that part pretty thoroughly, and we added a couple of things and took out a couple of things, but we made sure that we're taking care of our residents and for our mail carriers, too. Either sleet nor rain. One other thing that came up from the fire department is the size and location of the numbers on buildings for identification purposes. So at this stage, we have a minimum of four, maximum of six for residential structures, and we have four to 10 inches for commercial structures. We also have a caveat that if a, say for instance, the industrial warehousing, they want to put their number up top. This is something that we, I talked with the fire department about. If they wanted to put their number up top, obviously 10 inches is not going to work that good. But it does allow us to make a change to that. If they wanted to put up two inch or two foot letters up on the top of those buildings that they're driving to in a hurry, that is, we can approve things like that, too. So there's enough disparity or discrepancy in our, in our code that we can actually make some little changes like that. And that obviously is a good one. The other one that came up, and this came up from a resident. We've got one car garages, we've got two car garages, we have three car garages. However, our code did not allow for a three car driveway apron to get into those three car garages. You would have had to, my house, I pull off the side on a mulch path, and it is a pain to do. And, but because we do have a lot of three car garages that are going in, that have gone in or are going in, we widened that apron from a minimum or a maximum of 18 feet, add another nine feet, basically 27 feet. And it solves some problems for some people that have done it, have added an apron in the past, and it was not per code. They were getting in trouble. So. Zoning variance. Our Planning Commission was having an issue with zoning variances and the hardship requirements that were not taken into account in our variance code requirements. So we actually put in some parameters there that took into account the topographic location, the location itself, what it's next to. It gave a little bit more ability for the, for the, for the Planning Commission to work off of what the site actually looks like and what they're next to. Just making sure I get the good highlights. We want bicycle parking in all districts, depending, you know, for new developments and right in, so it was originally just in the mixed use downtown and the mixed use east shore districts. So we basically put that to all the other districts, whether it's commercial or industrial. And. Tree protection standards, we are basically following what state statutes requires now. Accessory structures, we clarified some information regarding garages and sheds and setbacks for side and rear yard. Oh, and then we also put in a new definition. I don't know if you recall the build to line that was referred to in the mixed use downtown. That basically means that if you have a new lot and you want to put in a house, your front setback from the, from the street will depend on your neighbors. If you have a house that's 10 feet from the property line, you'd be able to do 10 feet. If it's a mix between, say, 10 and 15, you can, you can do that mix right in between. The main thing that we were trying to avoid there is to not have a house sitting in front of somebody else's house as a new house. But we also put in a definition in the definition section in Appendix D. So that way we have a definition instead of basically looking at people scratching their chin and wondering what is, what is a build to line.
Okay.
Kelly Park, oh, this is a simple one. The Kelly Park Interchange District had block lengths, we were, it said perimeter instead of length. So perimeter for a block length is typically like 600 feet, and it was, it was perimeter, not length. So we clarified it was, it was the length of the block, not the perimeter. So that, otherwise it would have been a real short block going around. Again, common sense kind of corrections that we try to find. Those are probably the main highlights that I could.
Any questions for Jim on any highlights? Okay. Thank you, Jim. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Come on down.
Very brief comment from me, Albert McKebie 3603 Golden Jam Road. I presume that these amendments to the ordinance will create a lot of questions for Mr. Hittin's department. Can Mr. Hitt explain to me how he will be able to address these comments when I'm still waiting for an answer from Jean Sanchez from back in September? On September, the, on the 7th of February, I returned to City Hall to ask why I hadn't had a reply to my email. I'm still waiting. So perhaps he can address the situation that he'll be able to deal with residents.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2994 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Hitt, can we make sure, I'm not sure on the public facing packet, is this available for public review? On our, on our posting on our website?
On the ordinance? I'm not sure is it.
Because we're, it's late in the, late in the meeting, you did a gloss over, but you know, for people to be able to see what the actual text changes are.
That's, is it on the website? Do you know if it's on the website? I'm asking the.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we could.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, ordinance number 2995.
Ordinance number 2995, an ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential low to residential medium low for certain real property generally located south of MA Board Street and east of South Hawthorne Avenue, owned by the city of Apopka, comprising 1.9 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Again, Jim Hitt. I'm not Jean Sanchez, in case you're. This is some property that's on the south side of MA Board Street, across the street from Alonzo Williams Park and the Billy Dean Community Center. It comprises just a hair over one acre. This, if you recall back about six, eight months ago, we talked about trying to get some affordable housing into the downtown. This is some of the only large pieces of property that are available from the city for potential development. We have not inked any deals with anybody yet. We are working with the Administrative Alliance on this property. The property itself, again, it's pretty much largely vacant. It is, does have a future land use right now of five dwelling units per acre. If you look to the south side, the next block down, basically that's all the medium low also at 7.5 dwellings per acre. The property on the southwest of this one is also residential medium low. And actually, the western half of this is actually medium low also, but for intensive purposes, what I wanted to do was show that we wanted to bring all of that at 7.5 dwellings per acre that would net, that would net us seven units versus five. But either way, it is eligible for up to five units at this stage.
This is saying eight units on here.
I'm sorry?
It says eight units on our proposed.
Oh, no.
So it.
7.5 dwellings per acre proposed use under the staff report.
Well, under. Page 422, or page four of this, it says land use calculations current, gives you the five dwelling units in the proposed, gives you eight.
Oh, there it is, eight, yeah. I'll get that corrected for the second reading. So just for the staff report, should be seven units, yeah. Yeah, they actually wouldn't be able to fit eight because of the setback requirements and also the width requirements. Minimum width requirement in the downtown overlay is 50 feet, and that's what they're, that's what they've drawn up, and I'll show you that in a second also. So OCPS, we did contact them, and they consider this de minimis. They will have to, whoever develops this would still have to do a concurrency agreement for however many units it may be. It would be very, very small for just the seven units, though, that are there. By rights, they already have five units. It would be just two additional units at that point. The Development Review Committee did recommend approval, Planning Commission, they actually voted four to three against doing the seven dwellings per acre. The neighbor came out to the east, I think it's the grandson, that he had made a couple, a couple statements in regards to his grandmother's property, that the fence is on, it's on our property, but he would have to move the fence if this got developed. Regardless if it gets developed at five units per acre, the fence would still have to be moved. So they put the fence in the wrong location. He also stated that the property coming up from the south leads right into his property. It does not. It runs right along the property line itself. That's, let me, I can point this so that you. This is coming up. Right in this location here, coming off of 7th Street. So that goes straight up, right along the property line for both of these properties. One of the thoughts that we had originally thought of for this property was for a parking lot, and a lot of people thought that the parking lot would be favorable for the park itself. As a result of that, we did, we do have a plan for 17 additional parking spots off of Washington on the east side of Alonzo Williams Park. And we also have some parking that is not actually, you know, the, the, or the angle parking that's right south of the main park on MA Board Street. It is questionable in regards to hanging out into the street. We are looking at doing, as part of this development, also putting in some on-street parking, parallel parking, that's per code. We'd probably be able to get about six parking spaces along there. They're eight feet by 22 feet for, per code. And that would serve two functions. One is any overflow parking for guests that are, for some of the owners of the single family homes that would be put in, and it will also have a little bit of overflow for the, for the park, so that we would get a little bit more parking spaces there. The, so one of the things that, so he had brought up about a parking lot, and he also mentioned that the parking itself, that he'd like to put in three homes. It is up to five homes right now. One question regarding what would you like to, what would you rather see on the, on the lot? He did say, you know, three homes. But again, it does, it can go up to five homes at this stage. And that's what we were trying to do is just mirror what was already allowed on the southern side. The other thing that we were looking at doing, this is the general plan that, this is, it's a draft, obviously, but the northern lots themselves, there's two lots on the north side facing MA Board. They are almost exactly the same size as the lot to the east. So looking at it, the width wise, you're still looking at the same, same width lot. So the smaller lots themselves are, would be facing Hawthorne itself, and then we've got a shared use or accessible driveway going down the eastern side with a five-foot setback from the property line as a landscape buffer that's required per code. So this actually does meet code doing a shared driveway to the south. And then, and then the one, so basically it'd be rear lot to rear lot, which is, you know, typical subdivision. And then the three facing Hawthorne, again, again, meet code. They've got a 20-foot setback to their front, to their front porch area.
Can you just show me where we had talked about for the parking, for off-site parking for this?
It would be, well, the onsite parking, obviously, they've got their driveway area here, but the onsite parking. But the onsite parking would be right along, on-street parking would be right along here. And then the angle parking is right along here for the, for the street, for the park itself.
Uh huh.
For the park itself.
Okay.
Yeah, this is where the angle parking is. And then, correct, yeah. Overflow, thank you. But this is where we do the parallel parking.
So it would be, what did you say, an extra six on, besides the?
Right, right now it looks like we could probably put about six parking spots. It's 180 feet for the, for the width of the lot as it is right now. And so if you go 22 feet each, less about 30 to 35 feet for the driveway on the eastern side, you've got, you've got enough space for probably about six parking spots. If I can squeeze in more, I will. So obviously, staff's recommendation is still recommended for the seven dwellings per acre, 7.5 dwellings per acre, so we could get the, at least a couple more affordable homes in there. Obviously, anything, I say obviously over, over and over, but any types of agreements that we have with the Ministerial Alliance to do the affordable homes would be done with a development agreement so that it, so they get done in a timely fashion. In other words, it's not going to sit there vacant for a year or two. And that the homes would be considered affordable in, in terms of what Orange County has for their affordable housing rate.
Was, was this, this was, I have two questions that were asked of me. Was this a surplus, this piece of property? Was it ever surplus? Was it, you know, how did, how did it get from our, from the city to the Ministry Alliance? That was the question.
Well, it hasn't gotten to the Ministerial Alliance yet. What we're doing is looking to surplus it if we can get this, the, the right amount of density for the property in order to get developed for, for that.
So it has not been surplus?
No.
By us?
No.
If it does get surplus, does it go out for bid? I mean, does it go out so that others can have an opportunity for that?
This was, this was something that came up back when we were looking at some other properties for surplus. It, from what I understand, and the city attorney will probably correct me, is that the city does not have to go out to bid to surplus property. We, we can make arrangements with different entities for development or sale of a property itself. One of the reasons we did the, the 10 acres that was up north off of Sandpiper and Park Avenue was because it was a large piece of property. It wasn't a, you know, just a single type use where we're trying to get affordable housing. And obviously, we're, we learned our lesson with that one. We should have had a, a timely performance on that one, too. And we, we learn from those things, definitely.
Okay, because that was the question that was asked.
Yep.
And I didn't have the answer.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jim?
I just had, so my concern, and again, I attend most DRC meetings, that DRC has to approve events throughout the city, including at Alonzo Williams Park. One discussion thought was that we're taking away extra parking for any events there. And, and the better and bigger events we can do at that park, the better park succeeds, the more buy-in in the community, things like that. So I understand that we are doing 17 more spots on the northeast side. I'm just worried about this killing the opportunity for more events on this site and what that means for Alonzo Williams Park.
Radley, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the things, if, if we continue to use this for parking lot, we need to actually pave it. Because right now, the liability of having anybody walking across dirt and tripping and suing the city, it's right up there.
I mean, the liability is no different than if we had a parking lot, but I understand. We just need to present it the same way.
Yeah, it's much better if it's a paved parking lot.
Yeah.
And I had, I had actually done different designs that showed some homes on one part, parking on another part, or parking for the whole thing, putting, it was, it was, it was an exercise to see what, how we could design some properties. And working with the Ministerial Alliance, we came up with this design that could basically fit seven homes. So the, the options are there, though.
And these are all single-car garages, right?
Yes.
So are you concerned with parking issues?
Not really. It, it's like any house, you know, like a townhome development. You've got, you've got one-car garage and you've got a one-car driveway. And, and but, by, by having extra parking on the, on the north side, obviously, they might be parking there at night. But it's, that would be no different than a normal street parking on the street.
Well, I would echo the same sentiment I just made, is that if we were to do on-street parallel parking there, I wouldn't want it for the residents there. I'd want that dedicated for the, the park use. I think that's really important for the, for that park to succeed with events and entertainment. We need adequate parking. In the 16 spots that are there, I, I can, we all have a million pictures that I can show. None of the cars fit there.
Correct.
At all.
Unless you have a Beetle or a Clubman or something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of safety issues there on that front as well.
Let Radley a few more smoothies.
Radley Williams, Parks Reg Director. That was an item that I had heard at the DRC meeting as well. And I did reach out to Mr. Hitt. We are attempting with my staff to reach out to the property north of the park, which is owned by Quest, to see if there's any availability or interest to discuss, negotiate utilizing some of their property as our overflow parking lot. I'm not sure how many spaces, I'm not sure how many spaces would fit on the current property. So I can work with Mr. Hitt and kind of determine that to see if there's numbers that kind of makes sense. But one idea is to get with the property owner to the north and see if there's an agreement that can be reached to take a parcel of their currently vacant land for overflow grass parking.
Is that a concern of yours, though, too, for this park?
Parking, parking's always, you know, parking's always a need. So that's why we did start going down that path of trying to find a resolution or an alternate plan.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, it's just a really big concern of mine until we actually have something somewhat confident to move forward. I'm just uncomfortable getting higher density there and doing any agreements moving forward until we figure out parking. I mean, because where would ADA spots go? Where would, just a lot of different variables there and walking through rough terrain, things like that. I, I assume mostly this is not ADA compliant as it is, so just a lot of parking.
So yeah, if you'd like, I can continue down that path. I can get with Mr. Hitt and.
I mean, it depends with the rest of the council, obviously, if they, I mean.
And see what, what parking spaces, because we do have the 17 coming onboard here soon. But see what our deficit is after that and continue working down the path of the north property owner to see if we can begin a negotiation on that.
I happen to know somebody who serves on the board of Quest. So that can be a conversation, I think that will.
Right, if you could, if, yeah, we can.
Between now and.
Get some people in the right rooms together and we can start that conversation. And see if there's a way we can reach an agreement that benefits both Quest and, and our needs.
And of course, you know, I'm big on affordable housing and housing is definitely needed in that area. And so this would be a, a great asset to that community as well. And I think it would be to our advantage if we could work out something with Quest, because if you've ever been there on the weekend, 90% of the people at the park, park on Quest Park property.
Yeah, and so it could be a win-win for us to achieve. And also, that north property, as we're continuing on with the trail, it's going to be installed down that north side of the park. It kind of also fits as a possible trailhead location for parking.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jim or Radley? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane.
It's in the front.
I'll make it brief. I attended an event over the weekend, and where we had to use that area as overflow park. And so, two things for me. I think it'd be best utilized as parking for the park and for the Billie Dean Community Center. That event we had Sunday, if you can imagine us leaving that event Sunday, that's what Commissioner Nesta, Nesta pointed out. If it's adverse weather, where the, where the seniors gonna walk all the way to the north side to get to the parking lot? And then, when we talking about bringing homes into that south Apopka area, I'm all for that. But when I look into the vision, I don't want to bring homes in there that, if you fast forward 15 years from now, it put the community right back in the same poverty look that it, that it's in now. And that's what's been happening in south Apopka. When I look at these homes and I say, well, would I want to live there? Now, if I imagine on that parking lot, I'm living in, in that space and we have an event at the park or at the John Bridges Center, you're gonna have cars parked everywhere. You can barely get out of your driveway because you're gonna have so much traffic there. And so when we look into the future, when we're looking at doing things, look at doing things on the luxury and the comfort that we will want, that we will want to live in, that we will want our kids playing on that street. And then when you got these houses, you say they're back-to-back. Well, how would you like to walk out of your back door and somebody staring you right in the face? That's not comfortable living. That's not the living that we should want for anybody, because we wouldn't want it for ourselves. Thank you.
Well, there are some communities already that are built that way where houses are back-to-back.
Rod Love, The Landings, Apopka. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, there was a task force that took place four and a half, five years ago. I provided you with what I like to call receipts. In that task force report, it spoke about affordable housing. It specifically talked about affordable housing. And in addition to not speaking just affordable housing, and again, Mr. Mayor, you are the one who was the impetus for us starting the task force because of some of the violent crimes. But that task force didn't focus just on violent crime. That task force focused on the entire community, focused on housing, job training, focused on economic development. But in addition to that, and in your package, you'll see the receipts, this, this just didn't start yesterday, six months, a year ago. This goes back to, and I apologize, Pastor King and Hezekiah Bradford had to leave. Everybody knows this is Wednesday Bible study. But they participated on the task force. And it was a family member of Reverend King and mine who was murdered on 13th Street that was, again, the impetus to get the community together to talk about the things that we needed to do. I left you with a great deal of receipts, but I think I would not do this a great service if I didn't highlight some of the things that have taken place. In that packet that you have, in 2017, the Ministry Alliance submitted a letter to then-Governor Rick Scott that was a white page that was developed by Attorney Greg Jackson and myself, because at the time, the legislature was talking about eliminating CRAs, Community Development Agencies, as you all know. We submitted legislative appropriations for kid programming, job training and things of that nature. And so this goes back five, six years. But then if you fast forward to the day, Orange County Mayor Jerry Demings, he created a housing task force to address the crisis. When we talk about not wanting things on our back porch, think about those people who don't have a back porch. Commissioner Smith, I remember when I met you some years ago and you told me about your humble beginnings. You told me about how you were able to feed the chickens from inside the house. And city boy like me, I didn't know what you were talking about. You tell me, there were planks that were made up of the floor and you could throw the feed on the planks and feed the chickens underneath the house. We got a housing crisis. It reminds me of the story about those four people. And I'll leave you with this. Somebody, anybody, everybody and nobody. We've been having this conversation for a long time. The high end, based on the Orange County Task Force Report, the high end of affordable housing right now is $297,000. We put this in the report five years ago. We wouldn't be paying almost $300,000 if that property was developed somewhere back then. And this report talks about the things that we can do to work with kids in our community. We don't need to continue to see tragedies that take place like what took place last week. The Ministry Alliance wants to be that somebody to step up. Everybody knows what the problems are. Somebody can easily do it. Everybody knows. But as we stand here today, it hasn't been done yet, but we can come and we can criticize. All I want to do is work with the community. We're talking about seven homes. We're not talking about a development. We're not talking about a few hundred homes in a, in a community. Seven homes that the Ministry Alliance is looking at identifying people from the community to get them qualified so that they can own a piece of America. So Commission, it's in your hands. There are some folk who actually want to continue to work with. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else which should speak on this matter? Sure, come on up.
Tim Ford, Lakeside, Apopka. I know it's been long. I just want to be clear on what I'm hearing. I'm not saying I'm against affordable housing. I'm just a little confused because I guess I can say it straight. I thought we got sued to give them some affordable housing on this end. So I thought it was coming to Apopka one. But then the second thing I want to, are we saying that we're gonna purchase land from Quest? Or you, we're looking at them donating land?
It's owned by Quest currently.
Right, but the, the option that he brought.
I don't know.
See, that's what I'm saying. So I don't know, will we give away something to turn around and buy something?
I mean, really, at the, at the end of the day, I don't even know why we're talking about some of this peripheral stuff anyways, because, you know, the Ministerial Alliance does not own that property yet. The City of Apopka does. So I, I can appreciate Mr. Love's remarks. It's just, we're not even there yet. It's really what we should be deciding is whether or not it's compatible with the area. Now, on that last map, is that darker yellow compatible with what you're trying to do? Would it be dark yellow on that? Like every other piece of property that's abutting Hawthorne?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, basically, that line right along there, that's, that's where everything, to the west of the existing ones, is already the medium-low seven and a half dwellings per acre.
Because we can, we can talk concept all day long, but us taking this business or getting it to a second reading does not mandate us to do a parking lot or homes.
Correct, it's just, it's just getting the density there that could, if we needed it, work for us.
Correct.
Okay.
But the difference is too, though, this doesn't stop us from still moving forward with affordable housing there. It just limits to five versus seven, or eight, depending on.
Correct.
As long as that's the correct number. So I, again, I think for the success of this area, this is one of their only main parks in this community's area. It needs to be successful. The parking area there is garbage. And yes, we're getting 17 more spots eventually, but when? And is it going to be similar quality to what's on the south side of Alonzo Williams now? Or is it going to actually be what is expected everywhere else in the city?
It'd be probably similar to what Habitat for Humanity has, except I've, I've already seen the design of this home and they actually have more peaks and valleys on the roof line. And it, they're nice-looking homes.
All right. Anybody else from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2995 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we have the motion, I just need to ask a question of the attorney. Now, we're getting ready to vote, are we just voting that?
Land use.
The land use. Because I am a member of the Ministry Alliance and so I need to remove myself.
No, because there's no, the Ministry Alliance has no property interest in this property. It's city property and it's city land use.
But even if it's in the future, though? I mean, like if I'm selling a property or have the option to sell a property, make commission off of it and I rezone something for a higher density, I can make a higher commission on.
We don't have a, there's no contract.
But even if it's, it's an option down the road.
Well, anything is an option on the road, which will recuse you from voting on everything, potentially on any city property, because it's an option down the road. I mean, it, it's, it, the law in regards to conflicts of interest is that there's a direct pecuniary interest in, in the vote. And at this point, there's no contractual relationship between the city and the Ministry Alliance in regards to this property. It's a city property which we're seeking to change the density of.
Okay.
If there, at the time, there may be a contract, then that will be, we'll address it at that time. But at this present time, there, there's no contractual relationship and you don't have a conflict on potential, because then you all, there's, everybody has potential always.
Okay. All right. Looking for a motion?
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Oh, yes. Aye. I make a motion.
I second.
Second? Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one with.
Four to one.
Commissioner Nesta in opposition. Next up, Resolution 2023-. Next up, Resolution 2023 dash oh six.
Mayor Commissioners? I gotta find out who sets this agenda.
It's in the front. It's no front, front, in front of you. No, no.
I don't think it goes that high.
Yeah.
So, there we go.
Resolution 2023 dash oh six. A resolution of the City of Apopka, Florida authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste services with Horizon Dumpster Rental LLC for roll-off container collection and disposal of waste within the city.
So, any questions?
Any questions for Josh? Okay, anybody from the public which to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023 dash oh six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, a second by Mr. Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, City Council reports. Commissioner Nesta, you want to start us out?
Sure. I don't have much. Just we're celebrating Women's History Month. So that's exciting with two daughters. I look forward to making this a cool month for them. Wanted to reference again the tables at the pop concert coming up, the orchestra. They're going to be a hundred dollars a table. And looking forward to having those available for everybody. Wanted to see if we have an update on that financial advisor and what capacity we can get that ball rolling in some capacity. I know we had spoken briefly on Monday about going up to bid or asking for bids or something along those lines. Just need to get an update on that.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, it is out for bid. And we actually have one set of questions that came in today and we did send it directly to certain vendors.
Okay.
First try on being one.
Perfect. Is there a deadline for that?
We're trying to shorten it. We're trying to make it within the next week or so.
Okay.
But I have to address that question.
No, not that one. But you know your stuff. Thank you. No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, it was brought up at DRC this morning and I thought it was really important from the police chief that with each of our projects that were that come to DRC that go to planning and obviously come to us, that in that we have, you know, school concurrency, things like that, but to have an additional information kind of column, so to speak, that lets us know how many more firefighters we need for this new development, how many more officers we need, how many more possibly public service reps we need. So not saying it's going to always be like one or two or three. It can be point seven for this development. So it'll help us to kind of see what which each with each development, kind of what we need to be understanding in the near future of how we need to be staffing these departments. So I thought that was something. It's a it's more work for staff, but I do think it helps us make educated decisions moving forward of how it impacts. And we're not surprised when police or fire come up and say, hey, we need twenty more because you guys approved three thousand more units. So I just thought that was a really good point that was made and I'd like to just see that added to some of our information coming through. And that's it for me right now.
Commissioner Smith?
A couple of things. First of all, you know, we hear a lot of comments tonight about schools and about how they overcrowded and and I I've got to give School Board member Melissa Byrd a lot of credit that she's really she's staying on top of it. And she's doing all within her power to make sure that this section of Orange County is not overlooked. But we need to put more pressure on our state elected officials because it's a state problem as well. And so Orange County School Board's hands are are kind of tired. And so if we could reach out to them, and I think we had one workshop with them before we went down to the school board and and met with them, so we probably need to do that again. And then, like I said, again, work with our state officials and see what we can do about schools being built faster. And then, as you know, last month was Black History Month. There were several events that took place during Black History Month to celebrate the accomplishments of African Americans. And I attended several of those. Apopka High School had one, Wolf Lake Elementary, which was outstanding. Found out that Commissioner Becker's daughter can sing better than he can. And also at Wakava High School, they had one as well. The New Baptist Church also held an event. The mayor was in attendance at that one as well. And we want to give a great shout out to the City of Apopka, to Apopka Youth Council and to the Apopka Historical Society for the event that was held at the Bill Dean Community Community Center. Outstanding event, very well attended. And so we look forward to continuing that particular event in the near future. There was also an event held at the Pink Tea Room called Read Around the City where they highlighted three young African American authors. I was surprised. Found out one of them was even my niece. So it was great. Along with the School Board member Byrd, Commissioner Nesta and myself on last Saturday did a cleanup at Apopka Middle School and found out Apopka High School had one on the same day as well. We had known we could have coordinated a bit better, but that turned out to be a great event. And we are very thankful for all the participants that volunteered their services at that particular cleanup. There was a groundbreaking ceremony this week on Apopka Court Road for a new Orange Technical College that will be opening in the fall of 2024. It's going to replace the technical technical center that was in Winter Garden that used to be called Mid Florida Tech. So it's outdated and constantly being be modified in order to be updated. So they're building a brand new facility. So that's going to be great to serve the residents in Apopka Court and Winter Garden. So it's going to be closer to us as well. I'm also in conversation with a firm that's going to be bringing a delegation of about twenty-five individuals here from Africa. And and I would like for the City of Apopka to be a sister city. And they'll be going going to be coming on May second. They'll be here May second through the fifth. And so they'll be here during our first city council meeting of the month. And so if possible, we could have a proclamation and adopt them as a sister city. I also presented the idea this morning at the Orange County Board of County Commissioners Ag Advisory Committee because their interest in agriculture industry as well. And so they're going to have the dean from IFIS to come and speak with them also that morning and then come here that afternoon. So we're looking forward to that. We're working with a couple of seed companies to provide some seed for them as well to take back and locally with Agristarts to take back some plant material as well. So we're looking forward to that delegation from Africa to be here and for us to become a sister city. And last thing is if all possible, by our next city commissioner meeting, we can set a another meeting for the annexation of the incorporated parts of Apopka. That would be great. That's all I have. I'll be attending the Florida Black Conference of Local Elected Officials starting at six o'clock this afternoon. We'll be there until Saturday.
That's awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Okay, Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so obviously at the start of the meeting, almost five and a half hours ago now, I intended to have a much longer longer and larger conversation than than I'm going to make it now. But again, to renew my comments during public comment is every meeting, we are being challenged with our leadership or the lack thereof. And again, I'm looking at all five of us, not just single, single one of us. And so part of that is, you know, obviously we've had this this GAN report that was going around and draft state, non-draft state. It's my understanding that the department got an email that we're moving on. But I don't know what that means. Do we, have we gotten a final report and are we accepting that? And are we going to be presented with the findings of that report? That's my first question.
Good evening, Sean Wyler, Fire Chief, Fire Department. To answer your question, we are going to the the final draft we got, we are accepting as the final report. We are planning on vetting that report and presenting something to you in the next mission meeting regarding report and findings.
So just for the record, you are accepting it as a final report. It will be accepted by you as fire chief and you'll present it as such to the city council. What, if anything, is the administration doing in response to what was presented earlier this evening, the results of a vote of no confidence? The last city council meeting, while I did not get a second in my motion of my motion for no confidence, it was not officially killed for lack thereof. So technically it's still an open item. What, what? What are we going to do in terms of the concerns that unit representation made this evening and the result of that that vote? Is there any change or any plans for change in leadership? Not are you, so you're not going to? Nothing is going to come as a result of?
Well, we're looking at the GAN report. We're going to go through there and we analyze the things that we we need to change to improve and move forward.
You're that's for sure going to be on the next city council meeting? I mean, again, I don't want to go into we've been here long enough this evening, but we need some closure for these people. I mean, we had this conversation during our pre-meeting yesterday. And we've got to get to a place where we have, we've built enough confidence with the people that are sitting in this room. Most importantly, the people within your organization and the and Austin's family that makes like there's practical steps that we can commit to to say, we've got this stuff under control. And I just don't feel like we've gotten there yet. So hopefully, you know, come next meeting, we need to have that assurance. I'll I'll table my remarks that I have for my interactions with Mr. Rodriguez for for another day. And I'll I'll use it the rest of my time.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, I was going to touch on some of the highlights that Commissioner Smith touched on, so I won't do that. But I do want to touch on one thing and and that is it's regarding, if if anybody had been following me regarding the UCF Downtown Apopka Vision Plan. You know, while I was at Saturday Sounds on February 18th, I had been approached by some residents asking me, you know, how can I give them some more information regarding the vision plan? And of course, my response was, we don't have a vision plan going on. And they said, yeah, there's a table in the back over there and they're asking for a survey. So I did go back there. I spent about thirty-five minutes with the the UCF master students. And I was enlightened by a survey plan that was occurring. Let me see this. And here it is. Completely blindsided by it. This is what was occurring at the park. I really was enlightened by their, the project, that it's a school project, that it's a mission that they have. They're collecting data, conducting interviews. What what really surprised me was how long it was going on. They claimed it was, they said it was going on for about eight months and they told me who they had been talking to. So I remember coming in on Monday and speaking to Pam Richmond from Transportation. And she did tell me that it was an oversight, that, you know, she meant to inform us of it, but she forgot. So my my thing is there's a, there's the communication for me is is something that I have constantly addressed up here. Learning about a project or about an agreement or about a proposal, I seem to learn about it when we're here and then they're asking us to vote for it. And I don't know how to keep stressing that I would just like a heads up. Just give us some information. This past Monday, I guess the students, they go back to their professor. Well, he called me at home and I actually spent about thirty-five minutes with him on the phone. He gave me so much information. And I said to him, I apologize. I said, really sorry that, you know, I I posted a Facebook post. It wasn't supposed to be negative. I said it was about, I'm frustrated by the information that's not shared with the commissioners. So I'm asking our attorney, you know, fortunately, Ed Bass is not available, is to give us information. That's all. Just share information of things that are going on around our city that is going to affect an outcome. It's going to have an action from it. And this is going to have an action from it because I understand from the professor, Louis Santiago, who called me and gave me so much information that this class, it's a master, it's a, it's a class assignment by the professor. I learned that we were chosen because of the bike walk. I guess the the organization had to do with the pedestrian fatalities and that's how they selected Apopka as a project. So I understand that they are going to be coming back next Saturday to the amphitheater to continue their survey. They are coming back. They have two more public meetings. They have Saturday, March 4th at Saturday Sounds. Oh, I'm sorry, that March 4th at Saturday Sounds. And then they have another community center, the Apopka Community Center on March 8th. The UCF students will be presenting their projects with their findings and recommendations to the public council next month, April 19th. So that's like an action. I mean, they're going to make a presentation. Their masterclass assignment ends April 24th. Thereafter, their assignment will be reviewed and graded by their professor. And then the whole project will be sent to us here at the City of Apopka. So, I mean, I I wholeheartedly support the project. I think it's good. I think the information that they're going to get. They're working on their own, getting data, interviews, conducting this public survey on their own time. I think that it would be good for us. But what I'm asking as a commissioner, we were all elected, each and every one of us. And when you come up here, each and every one of us, our votes matter. So I think it's important that before we vote on anything, that we have the same information that the mayor has before we vote on it. I don't appreciate getting the information here and not having enough to make a good decision and and to vote on it. So that's what I'm asking. How can we change it so that the communication among us that when we all come up here and we get an agenda, we all have the same information? I I don't know. I just, I'm asking. I'm asking the chair.
As far as the UCF, that we started this ten months ago and or when Emily brought it up to us as her, through her, the contract, we have them. So it's been going on. I had one meeting eight months ago, six months ago. Haven't talked to him since. So I I'm I and and if, you know, Pam, maybe we she should have given you that information.
Well, I don't want to throw Pam under the bus.
But they're still, no, but it's they're they're still getting, they're gathering information. Then when they bring us back to us, that's when we have, okay, wow, this this, you know, this will give us something to to look forward to. But it's not, there's no actionable item. We didn't pay him anything. There's no actionable item at all. So it's it's a
But it's not that you're missing the point. The point I'm trying to, Mr. Mayor, the point I'm trying to bring is that, as you said, they came to me now and learning ten months ago.
I don't, whatever.
Okay, ten months, eight months. Still, we had all that time.
They came to the chamber. Well, they just came to the chamber and were asking a couple of questions about, you know, the city, the the population size, the charter, what our former government. Quite honestly, I remember all the questions they asked. I was there for literally five minutes because I was in and out of another meeting.
Downtown Apopka Vision Plan, Public Outreach Service, City of Apopka. Does what does this survey say to our constituents?
It's a survey.
No, this says that somehow we are partnering to get this survey, to get the information. So when someone comes to me and says, can you give me some information on the vision plan? You know what my response was? No, that we're not having a vision plan. No, we're not having a vision plan. Then I go and I see this, and I said, oh, okay. Well, I knew nothing of this. So how do we get some information on something like this beforehand? Not that we're going to participate, but that we have some knowledge of it.
Okay.
I don't know what does okay mean.
Means I'll take care. I will, I will keep you informed.
I think like a nice rule moving forward would be if our logo is on it as a city.
I didn't even, I didn't even see them. I mean...
You did. It was on your Facebook post with the second group that was at Promigate. You had this up.
Well, that's, that's what showed up, yeah.
I can shed a little bit of light because I wasn't involved with the project. But just a couple of things to note. Number one, it's a student project. Number two is, we did not see that to be able to even approve it.
Right.
Anybody can do that kind of thing, and we might not know that they were doing it. Quite honestly, I mean, you think about it. How many, how many people do petitions and how many people do surveys? And put our logo on things? We don't know. I mean, they, that's, that's a sad...
I think this hits a higher mark though, because again, and I, I had the same reaction. I'm walking up to Saturday Sounds with my daughters. I'm walking up the sidewalk, and there's a formal table with a formal tablecloth that has that branding on it, and a whole bunch of people sitting around there that I have no idea who they are. And my first reaction is, huh, what's this? And so I've got people that I was sitting next to go over and inquire and, you know, it's very disjointed. And to Mr. Velazquez's point, it makes us look...
What is going on with us?
...a little out of touch with what's going on with our own city. And that's...
Just share, all I'm asking is better communication to share with us.
If something's going on, let you know, yeah.
Just to let us know, give us some information. I, I mean, I was really surprised because my first response was, we're not doing a vision plan. And then when I went back there and spoke to the group, very nice group, they gave me information. Their professor literally called me at home and wanted to share what the program was about, why the project started, how we got picked, when the timeline is for the, it's a homework assignment for them.
Yep. Yeah, I've been trying to make sure I get you the information.
But it took the professor to call me to do that. And he did it out of courtesy. Because when I spoke to the group, it was really, I was trying to get as much information from them. I gave them my card. And I said, you know, if you, if you have any questions, please give me a call. Will their professor call?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is get a summary of the project itself and get that to all of you so that you, you're informed of what's going on with that. Bring you up to speed, I guess you'd say.
If I may, just in the future to work with you, I think this is a matter that's probably best handled. I don't, I don't want to speak with Edward because he's not here. But I think it's an administrative, administration matter.
No, it is.
That we, that we can probably try to establish some type of administrative guidelines and thresholds on what information is such that is delivered to you or some information that sometimes it's either just, you know, informational. Someone comes in and seeks information from staff. So if we, we can all probably all get together and set up the informational thresholds you want so that if, if something reaches this threshold, it's an automatic. At a minimum, you're going to get an administrative memorandum to all five of you with the, with an update or it's just to, to anything that's in the planning stages without necessarily, I mean, it's, we're, I think we're all just going to have to sit down together and try to establish what would be, what you feel are the proper thresholds of what, what reaches that level for you guys to be informed of and what, what doesn't. So, but, and I, I...
So I just want, I just want to say this. This commission, myself, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Nesta, I will say one thing about this commission. We are really interactive in our community. We attend events, we attend ribbon cuttings. I mean, I attend every Saturday Sound. We are so interactive with our community because it's so important to us. And we probably do something that maybe previous commissions didn't do. So a lot, we've developed, we've developed and, and relationships with constituents. He may have a whole bunch of constituents that probably don't call me, but may call him. The same with Nick Nesta, and of course, the same with Commissioner Beck, I mean, Commissioner Smith. So I just feel that as, as a council, if we all knew at least something's going over by the south side of Apopka. Sometimes I don't get to know that there's, something's going on until I see Commissioner Smith post something. And I go, oh, I didn't know that was going on. And, you know, the same with Commissioner Nesta. He may attend some events that they knew about, and that's fine. But I just think some things, especially something like this, we should have all had at least a heads up. To say, listen, we have a UCF group out there. They're going out, they're getting data, they're interviewing people. And you know what? They're going to show up at public places, and they're going to be providing a flyer, a flyer. Just a heads up. It would have given us, it would have actually given them a greater audience because we would have shared this with, within our Facebook, our social media.
And then that's, and that's fine. And I'll advise Edward of such because it's really an administrative, an administration matter. So then we can establish certain, those thresholds, the levels of information. I mean, in regards to this project, I found out after you because I found out about it reading from your Facebook page. So I was, I was even out of town.
And it wasn't a negative Facebook face. It wasn't a negative Facebook post. It was an informational, and I was frustrated by it. Because I was like, here I go to Saturday Sounds and people are asking me, oh, can you give me more information? I had nothing. And so I appreciated that their professor did call me at home and spent time with me on the phone. And I, I really support this. I think it's wonderful. I think that they're going to come back with probably some data and, and, you know, interviews that they've had. And certainly, the, if, if the residents are participating with this, I think that would be good for us to have that information. So that was it. That's what I wanted to talk about. And then again, the GANON report, but we'll wait until the next meeting when I guess we get to vote on it as a final report, correct?
We're not voting on it, right?
No, we don't vote on it.
It's not an action item. I think we're just being educated.
Really? You don't vote on this?
No.
You don't vote on this?
No, it's not an, we're presenting, we're presenting the findings of the report. And if anything, they might understanding is that the fire department will then do its own analysis and then try to prepare some type of report or some type of document to implement the findings in the, in the GANON report.
Will that also be presented next meeting? Will that same thing be presented next meeting?
Well, I don't think we're going to reach that point. I don't think they're going to have two weeks. I mean, I'll defer to the Fire Chief. I don't think they have two weeks to actually come up. Here's, here's our complete after-action report. I think it's, it's up to the Fire Chief what he's going to, what he's going to present. That now falls with their administration.
Oh, okay. I thought you had to vote to accept this as a final.
No, there's no, it's not.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I just had two, one, well, two things. It just brought up that, I thought we were getting a fire update today too because we met on Monday, and I assume you met with all the commissioners. I thought preceding that meeting, we would always...
Yeah, we'll, we'll include that as part of our, again, for time's sake tonight. You know, it's something we all discuss, but we can, we can...
Okay, because that's really important. We all agreed to do that. I want to make sure that's, regardless of time, that's important. Attorney Rodriguez, just one thing, and we discussed this, is just that email that was forwarded out to Mrs. Butcher. I think it's proper to apologize for that. You don't have to, but I think it would, she deserves that with the email that was sent out.
I will apologize if my statements offended her. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I wouldn't do it, but I don't think, they didn't deserve a response. He could do if he'd like to. You know, if you don't call somebody a liar, and, and their integrity, their, as an attorney, his integrity is, is all he's got. That's all he get, get hired on, so, but that's...
That's, I'm, I've, I stated whatever. Yeah, I mean, this is the line of stuff that I wanted to talk this evening. But we're, I, I want people with the proper wits about them when I present my, my stuff. But I mean, you could argue whether the appropriateness of an email or not. But if you make a remark like that and send it back out to the general public, I mean, there's, there's proper decorum. Well, expand, expand on the laugh because I don't know how to interpret your laugh. If you can communicate what you mean, have the dialogue.
With your, your little tirade yesterday.
That was a private meeting between the attorney and myself.
Okay, all right.
Were you there, Mr. Mayor? Were you, were you, were you there?
No, I've heard plenty of people tell me about it when in the next room.
Okay, so I didn't want to do this tonight, but here we go. When I arrived for my pre-staff meeting yesterday, a lot of people in the room, in the administrative conference room, that's tied to the attorney's office. The attorney was there and respectfully asked that he have 10 minutes of my time, to which I agreed. We went into his office. Meanwhile, the rest of that staff stayed in the administrative conference room, and we had a dialogue. I won't go into the particulars of that dialogue, but it ended at us yelling at each other. He was yelling at me, I was yelling at him. We were raising our voice, and everybody in the city hall, probably on the first floor, heard every single word that we said. But that was a private meeting. If people heard what was said, it's a private thing. I can sit here and, and hear what he has to say tonight, and I can talk right back to him. Because that's what mature adults do. So I don't know what you think, like, I had, I was out of line. I am totally transparent when I step out of line and I take full ownership. I told him earlier tonight, when, when his predecessor, Mr. Bird, put a fire report in front of us, and I referenced it during the meeting, and he admonished me during that meeting. I had some choice words for him when he left council chambers, and it was inappropriate. And I apologized to him then. We're human, we make mistakes. People are going to email us and call us liars. They're going to, they're going to blame us for rapid development within our city. They're going to say, we're the responsible people for causing traffic. We, as a council, are responsible for Austin Duran's death. We're all going to get that. How we choose to respond to those people in a more adult and mature fashion is what sets us apart as leaders. So you can sit there and laugh about what conversation that we had behind closed doors, and that was a private meeting. I won't divulge to people what was said during that meeting. I can say what the spirit of it was, but I'm not going to sit there and transcribe it. Now, did I lose a little bit of respect? Because I think there's a, a lack of seniority or, I'm using the wrong words here, but insubordination, yeah, sure. And we can discuss that later. But holy cow, if that's your damnation on me because I had a heated argument with our attorney, give me a break. And we should, certainly shouldn't be sending emails back. And I'll, I'll quote, paraphrase, or whatsoever in that email. It's, I don't think that I have to deal with this crap. That shouldn't be sent back to people that we're dealing with.
Oh, he didn't do that. That was me, so I'll, I'll take that responsibility.
Okay, whoever authored it.
So, all right. Mr. Rodriguez, anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, all right. Couple of quick things. Legends of Apopka, great event. Thank you to Dr. Jackson, the Historical Society, for helping put that together. Especially shout out to Mary Bell and to Francina Boykin for putting together a great booklet that can be had at the front desk, City Hall. It's $10 for the 28 leaders of Apopka. Also, we got tomorrow night is the Apopka Youth Council. They host the Mental Health Town Hall, starts here at 6:00 PM. So we got a great lineup. So if you've got a chance to come on down here tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And with that...